Good morning. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, July 17th, year 2001. We should be conducting a city council meeting this morning. We have five members present. Councilmember Garcetti, Han, Miskowski, Reyes, and Padilla. We need ten members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Zine. If you're in the building, please make your way to council chambers. Members? Members, let's begin. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 17th, year 2001. It is just after 10:15 in the morning. Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays as close to 10:00 a.m. as possible, and we can be viewed on Channel 35 if you live within the city of Los Angeles and have a cable. You can also listen to council meetings on City Phone, and in addition to that, you can view webcasts of city council meetings on www.lacity.org. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, and Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla, twelve members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Galanter moves, and Mr. Burnson seconds.
Mr. President, before starting the regular meeting, there's a couple items to be continued. Item number one is a mayor's veto. There's a request from the chair of the committee to refer that to the Rules and Elections Committee.
Chair recognizes Ms. Miskowski prior to that.
I would like to speak on that matter. I don't know if you want to call it special.
Well, allow members to speak on the item before referring it to committee. I'll recognize you at this time.
Well, the first question I have is, is the committee chair guaranteeing that it will come back to council in time, within the timely nature of the chance to override a veto? There's a very specific time limit on that, and if it's referred to committee and not heard before that time, I would like the chance to speak on it and consider it today.
No, I do understand, and therefore allowing people to speak at this point in time. I also know that some of the new members wish to come up to speed on the issue itself. You wish your three minutes now?
Well, can we get a guarantee from the chair of the committee that it will be heard and sent back to council within a timely manner for the consideration of an override?
Sure, that's a yes, and for clarification, members, I'll announce this morning that I will appoint myself on a temporary basis to chair that committee before announcing the rest of the committee changes that are due within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, the only other thing is that I have distributed, because I know that new members were not familiar with what the council had done as of the end of last fiscal year, the report that was submitted by the City Ethics Commission. It's dated November 15th, 2000, and it describes what the Ethics Commission had done beginning in 99, October of 99, holding numerous public hearings and public comment in review of a document that had been a ten-year study, a study in ten years of the work that the Public Matching Funds had done, and what, in fact, it had had in the reform of elections in the city of L.A. And I think it shows that there was a conscientious, deliberate, comprehensive effort to deal with the matching funds issue that our Ethics Commission recommended to us based on a study done in 98, and I believe that it is merited. So as long as we have the commitment that this will be back on the agenda within the timely manner of ten days for consideration, then I will defer to having it referred.
You have that commitment. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. Are you now the chair? This is a point of information, since it was vacant. Are you now the chair of the Rules and Elections now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Chair recognizes Ms. Galanter.
Well, I was going to ask the same question. It's my understanding that the, I wanted to know who the chair was, because the chair had been Mr. Ferraro, and of course, that seat is now vacant. I had served as the vice chair and had not made any requi-- and then became chair in his absence, and to the best of my knowledge, the last communication we had from you was that everybody was to assume the committee seats of the people, of their predecessors on the council, and there is no council member in District Four to assume the chair. So I just was curious, since I know that I had not asked for this to be sent to committee, and was under the impression that I was still the vice chair of the committee and hence serving as the chair.
Acting chair, you are correct, but in light of the vacancy in council District Four, as I mentioned earlier, I will be appointing myself as temporary chair until--
I see. Well--
Final and formal--
Thank you for letting me know. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, you answered my question. I, you're the president, and I think that you can make the appointments accordingly to the best of your judgment, and obviously you've done that. The mayor called for a comprehensive study, and certainly that's something that you will consider. I think time is essential, however, we're not giving you a hot foot that appropriate. You know, sometimes haste makes waste, but we're going to assume that you're going to give it, your due deliberation, and your best judgment will emanate from the committee, and I trust that that will be the case.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Seeing no additional members wishing to speak, this item is now referred to Rules and Elections with the commitment that we will bring it back in a timely fashion.
Mr. President, a point of clarification, the deadline on this matter is August 17th.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item number two, a request that this matter be continued by council District Nine and the CLA till August 10th.
Without objection, item number two is continued.
Brings you to the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items numbers three through thirteen. Item number twelve requires a motion, inasmuch as there's two reports on one file.
Mr. President, members, I think Mr. Thomas has some interest in item number twelve, and so do I, continue it, and he's not here today. Why don't we continue that to Friday? Item number twelve.
Any objections, members? There's no urgency or deadline, Mr. Holden?
No.
Okay. Without objection, item number twelve is continued till this Friday.
That's July 20th. So currently before you, items numbers three through eleven and thirteen.
Item eight, special, please.
Item eight is called special by Ms. Galanter. Any other specials, members? Public hearings have been held on these items. Ms. Miskowski calls item five special. Mr. Zine calls item number three special. Any other specials? Seeing none. Clerk, what remains before us?
Items numbers six, seven, nine through eleven, and thirteen.
Is item number four before us as well?
We haven't got to fourteen or fifteen yet. These are items three through thirteen. The special number three was called by Mr. Zine, number five by Ms. Miskowski, number eight by Ms. Galanter.
Again, Mr. Clerk, items remaining before us?
Six, seven, nine through eleven, and thirteen.
Is item number four before us?
Excuse me, item number four, too.
Members, any other specials? Mr. Zine?
Number six, special.
Mr. Zine calls item number six special. Those are all the specials. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number fourteen is the opening of a bid. Pursuant to the notice of sale published on June 29th, 2001, for a common carrier pipeline franchise in the city of Los Angeles, one bid has been submitted by Union Pipeline Company, a wholly owned subsidiary of Tosco Corporation, and a certified check in the sum of $500 as a guarantee of the bid on the subject franchise has been submitted.
Mr. Burnson?
What's the location of that pipeline?
Is there staff available to answer Mr. Burnson's questions? Mr. Burnson, do you wish to hold this item on the desk?
Yeah, I'll just hold it on the desk. I'd just like to get the location.
We'll hold items fourteen and fifteen on the desk. Mr. President, that brings you to items numbers sixteen through thirty-three, which are items which public hearings have not been held. Item number twenty-three is a request that staff report. Do you wish to call that special?
Yes, we'll call item number twenty-three special. I believe we also have cards on items number eighteen, twenty-two, and twenty-eight. We'll call those items special.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven?
And number twenty-four as well. Any members of the public wishing to speak on any of the items now before us, please bring forward your comment cards. For the time being, the chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
I just wanted to call item twenty-seven special, but I can't see if it's already been called special. Yes, it is.
Mr. Pacheco calls item twenty-seven special. Mr. Garcetti calls item number twenty-six special.
On twenty-four A, can I just delete the fee waiver?
Twenty-four A? Sure, we do have a comment card on that item, so we will--
The motion will be to delete the fee waiver.
Okay, so twenty-four with an amendment to twenty-four A. Members, any other specials? Mr. Weiss?
Mr. President, on item twenty-nine, I'd move to continue that one week.
Request to continue item number twenty-nine. Without objection, members, item twenty-nine is continued for one week.
That'll be July 24th.
Clerk, what remains before us?
Items numbers sixteen, seventeen, nineteen through twenty-one, twenty-five, thirty through thirty-three.
Clerk, please open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, on the supplemental agenda, items number thirty-five and thirty-six are items which public hearings have not been held.
Well, let's open the public hearing on items thirty-five and thirty-six. Members of the public wishing to speak on those items, please submit your cards. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
It's special, Mr. President. Thirty-five is special, and the staff should be prepared to give a report.
Item number thirty-five is called special. Anybody wishing to call item number thirty-six special? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll on item thirty-six. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item thirty-six is approved. Next item, please.
Item number thirty-four is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold the closed session items on the desk.
So the first special is item number three, called special by councilmember Zine.
Councilmember Galanter, item number three?
No, I believe that was councilmember Miskowski.
It was Mr. Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item number three, do we still have review of any location that may be approved? That's a question for, I guess, the CLA, and what are they trying to do in the industrial areas if we have a-- And what are they trying to do in the industrial areas if we have a situation where there's an exemption in an industrial area where they want to utilize these wireless communication? And we saw last week where a residential then came into a commercial area, and we have a conflict. And the concern is, will we then have review if it changes? Because according to this, there's an exemption for industrial and commercial areas where they don't have to go through a process. And the process would take hold for residential, but not for commercial industrial. And sometimes, we have the mix in the communities. So I'd like to find out from someone the answers to those questions on item number three.
I think --
I'll hold your time as staff comes forward to answer those questions.
Honorable councilmembers, my name is Frank Eberhard with the Planning Department staff, and with me is Michael Legrand, also of our staff. And we're from the code study section who prepared this particular element. There are two things. First of all, performance with the general plan. One of the requirements of the findings in improving a condition of use is a performance with the general plan. And if they cannot make that finding, they cannot approve the project. Secondly, the condition of use procedure applies when the -- in an industrial zone when it's adjacent to a residential or agricultural zone. So if there is an intrusion such as that, they would have to go through the condition of use procedure and not be exempt. Does that answer the councilmembers' questions?
What if there's a mixed use? If it goes from an industrial and then due to the housing crisis, they decide to put some residential and change the zoning, then what occurs?
If it's a residential zoning, it would have to go through the condition of use process.
So there is no process for approval in industrial and commercial? They can just establish those?
As long as it's not adjacent to a residential zone.
And what does adjacent defined as?
Across the street, a common boundary line, that's what it would be.
What about a school?
It depends on the zoning.
What about an elementary school? Would that be exempt? Or would that then require the approval?
Well, if -- it would require an approval if it's a private use. If it's for school use only, they're exempt if they choose to exert that. And the city can't do anything about that. But in most cases, for telecommunications by a private company, it is not exempt.
It is not exempt?
It is not exempt.
So there would be an approval process?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Eberhard, I think you answered one of those questions not entirely properly. When Mr. Zine asked, will there be a hearing in an industrial zone? Technically, there would not if the industrial applicant or the wireless applicant agrees to all the guidelines. If there is an exemption from the guidelines, then it has to come through a hearing, as I understand it. So Mr. --
That's correct.
What this is, is an attempt to put -- to codify, to put in our code requirements that have to be met, and indication of a discretionary hearing for wireless telecommunication facilities when they are adjacent to residential uses. And that's critical, because in the past, there have been some waiver, some guidelines, but they were enforced intermittently. In some areas where you had very active homeowner organizations, they participated in, and they got better-looking cellular facilities, or some disapproved entirely where they were near schools or they were near playgrounds. And we actually had a study that the Planning Commission had, which showed this disparity, that in some areas, you had much nicer-looking, better architectural features, better landscaping, better everything. And in other areas, you didn't. This now codifies and requires that everybody go through this hearing and require this type of improvement. The exemption for industrial areas was, again, you can get an exemption if you follow certain guidelines. If you don't follow those guidelines, which still deal with some aesthetic treatment, et cetera, then you would have to have -- that industrial user would have to come forward for discretionary hearing as well. So this is, I think, an attempt to even the playing field, make sure that those applications are reviewed, get notice, get application to the council office, and give the communities, the neighborhoods, a chance to participate, participate fully, not waive a hearing, and have their input on what and how these cellular facilities should be monitored, should be built, and should be handled in an aesthetic quality-of-life neighborhood issue.
Mr. Burton?
Yeah, I think the explanations you've had have covered most of the ground. I'm going to tell you the rest. Basically, right now, there are no standards in our codes. And we do need to have some standards, and that's what this does. It puts them in a code form. This is not the end, and it's not complete. Just this morning, I discovered there was something that I would have liked in there that is not in there. I'm going to bring it in separate rather than hold this up. And that is that I think that all the standards should be disguised in some manner so they're not just ugly poles. I don't care whether they're an industrial zone. I don't care whether they're on a vacant lot. They should not look bad. They should be aesthetically pleasing. And I am going to introduce a motion and refer it to the Planning Department to come back with something that requires that regardless of where they're at. But this is a step in the right direction, and we should approve it. And if we need to make some changes, we'll do it as we go along. But up to now, it's been very catch-as-catch-can, depending on who was aware of it, who the homeowner's group was, as Cindy mentioned, and so forth. But that shouldn't make a difference. They should look, where we permit them, they should look decent and look like part of the landscape wherever they're at. So I would urge an aye vote on this, and we'll hear more as we come forward with some additional requirements on these things.
Mr. Zine?
I want to thank my colleagues for their explanation. And I'm -- my only concern was that we don't make more blight and more controversy and bring in other negative activities and other negative structures in the community. And my first reading of it showed that there would be exemptions where we would add to that. And what Councilmember Miskowski and Councilmember Burton have stated clearly is that this improvement of what we have now, which is basically the helter-skelter. So thank you for your -- yeah, it's not finished, and there'll be further amendments, but I appreciate your input, and you've convinced me on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Any members -- other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That item is approved. Fourth with on that item. Next item, please.
Item number five called special by Councilmember Miskowski.
Ms. Miskowski, item number five.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is another issue dealing with ethics and the campaign reform. Perhaps I'd like to have the city attorney and the Ethics Commission come forward. There is circulating, and I think on the desk, a submittal of a substitute motion for this. And let me begin and ask that, if my time be held, will we have a presentation by the City Ethics Commission?
Yes. Leigh Ann Pelham, Executive Director with the City Ethics Commission. We have on item number five today, the special election, what we're calling our membership communication ordinances. You'll recall that during the April and June runoff of this year's elections, there was a -- there was an ordinance passed by the city that would essentially try to correct what had been a loophole with Prop. 34 that resulted in the lack of disclosure for certain types of member communications and that failed to enable city candidates to count those member communications towards the lifting of the spending limit that we have as part of our comprehensive matching funds program. We enacted those ordinances only specific to the runoff -- excuse me, to the elections that took place this last April and June. They expired at the end of those elections. At that time the council debated the issue, there was a motion made to bring back the same language to enact it prospectively so that there would be the same provisions in the law for all future city elections. That's item number five before you today. What we wanted to do is bring to your attention the question of whether, rather than introducing this as a permanent ordinance at this point, it may make sense to adopt a -- an ordinance that would do the same things that it did for the spring elections, but on a temporary basis to take care of the Council District Four special election that's coming up, as well as the Council District Two special election that's coming up. So again, these membership communications ordinances, as we call them, would do basically three things. One, it would treat all member communications that expressly advocate the support or defeat of a candidate, the same as any other independent expenditure that's made, and would count towards the lifting of our expenditure limits, because people would have to report them within 24 hours. In addition, to make sure that there's the same disclosure in the second and fourth district races as there was in this last spring's elections, we would have an additional filing prior to the date of the election so the public has information about who's funding those activities or who could be funding those activities. And then, thirdly, there was also the provision that is in the law, that was in the law that we are proposing, continues to be in the law, that would provide the public with information about who is funding anonymous telephone ads and would require the text of those advertisements to be on file with the Ethics Commission, just as candidates and independent expenditure committees have to put them on file with us. So in the interest of additional public disclosure, making sure that these laws are still in place for the second and fourth district races, we are proposing that, rather than doing these permanently, that these be enacted on a temporary basis to take care of these elections so that we have the opportunity, in light of this last election, to really step back and look fully at the experience we had in this election, come back with a comprehensive package of reforms that would be looking at rectifying this situation permanently.
Mr. Pacheco?
Oh, that was just the explanation from the staff. What I had wanted to indicate is, and I think the staff did, is we had attempted, and what is on the agenda, is an ordinance amending the municipal code to do this permanently. As has been indicated by the staff, we've been -- there are things happening in Sacramento where they believe that the state law preempts the local law and our ability to deal with this on a long-term basis. So the staff has agreed to recommend, and that is what the substitute is, instead of adopting the second reading of the ordinance and putting this into effect today and potentially jeopardizing and getting into litigation with the state, our staff wants to go back and work with the state on a permanent fix. But in the interim, substitute motion, item five, is the four special ordinances for the special elections in two and four, the general and the runoff, the primary and the runoff, continuing it in place for just those two seats while the -- our staff works with the state staff on coming up with a permanent fix. So this, the substitute is that that was recommended, drawn up by the city attorney in consultation with the Ethics Commission, to keep in place that that we acted on in an emergency during the last election cycle. And I think that it's the better cautious way of proceeding so that we keep that in place now while our staff works out the permanent recommendations after consultation with the state FPPC, the state legislature, and all of those who have an interest in a long-term reconciliation. So I move and recommend approval of the substitute motion, item five.
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, I have a specific question based on, we were talking about Proposition 36 and member-to-member communications and -- 34? I'm sorry, 34. What I need to know, because I have a specific concern, is that right now, the Democratic Party, for example, as they did in the recent election against our now mayor, Jim Hahn, funneled practically half a million dollars against his candidacy without any contribution limits on the front end to communicate to their members. My concern is, I'm facing a reelection in two years, and the Democratic Party historically, if they follow the same practice that they followed during my first election, at that point, they spent $20,000 against me for my first election. My concern is, in my reelection, if they chose to funnel $200,000 or $250,000 against me, the way they did against Mayor Hahn, how are we going to be able to level the playing field? And how are we going to be able to counter that from our end, considering that our rules put a restriction on any IE that can contribute? Are there any talks about how we're going to do that? Because they're not going to change the law. And as far as I understand, the FPPC has ruled or stated that, as of now, our rules don't preempt Proposition 34. So how do we level the playing field in a very, obviously, a very particular situation mine? Because I know for a fact that the leadership of the Democratic Party was not happy with some of the decisions I made in the mayoral race in terms of who I chose to support. So what suggestion, what advice do you have in terms of leveling the playing field when I have to face that type of situation? Because they have no restrictions. Someone can give them $10,000, $50,000 and use that door. And the reason it's particularly a concern to mine is because 70, probably 65 to 70% of the individuals who are going to vote in my election are registered Democrats. So it's, they're going to be heavily influenced or heavily targeted for these type of communications through that door. So how do we level the playing field? How do we make it a fair contest under those circumstances within our rules?
I wish I had an answer for you at this point, Councilman, and I don't. But one of the things, as you know, we're currently engaged in, in addition to talking with those at the state, is to review this year's experience, review the 10 years of experience we have with our matching funds program. And one of those components is to directly talk with candidates and treasurers who were involved in this campaign and find out from you all what you think would be helpful in terms of increasing competition. Obviously, one of the fundamental goals of our system is to make sure that the playing field is as easy even as possible while we encourage voters to participate in the system. I don't have an easy answer for you. Certainly, independent expenditures under court cases cannot be limited. The city does have a requirement in its charter, as you mentioned, that limits contributions to independent expenditure committees per se to $500 in a calendar year. But I think one of the things that we'll be looking at with our analysis as it continues is whether we can use it, matching funds in some creative way to help even the playing field as much as possible. But we simply, at this point, don't have an answer for you.
So at this point, as was experienced during the mayoral election, the individual following the city rules to the T and does not have that third-party support like Mr. Verogosa had and Mr. Hahn did not have, is really at an extreme disadvantage in terms of being able to level the playing field rapidly. So for example, if the Democratic Party were to decide at the last week to inject $100,000 against someone because they can get two donors to give $50,000, even under our rules right now, it's incredibly difficult to get at $500 increments 20 -- what would that be, 20,000 donations or 2,000 donations? I mean, we pretty much have to get 2,000 donations in a one-week period to compete with that type of infusion under the current rules.
Well, you'll recall, we do have expenditure limits that are lifted. So if you're facing a candidate and there, if you're facing an independent expenditure campaign of a certain amount, then you, as a candidate participating in our matching funds program, are no longer bound by the spending limits to which you agreed as a condition of participating. And there are also things that trigger the lifting of the contribution limits to a slightly higher level in some circumstances, and that's also a charter-based provision. So there are some things currently in law, in the law, that does try to even the playing field under those circumstances. But obviously, one of the things that we'll be looking at is if there is a greater balance needed and how we might be able to achieve that.
Mr. Pacheco?
Okay.
I'll ask that you push your button again.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. Pacheco is absolutely correct. It was the legislative intent and intent of legislators to circumvent the laws which are good regarding campaign contribution that we have on the books. And that means that they can do anything they choose to circumvent our law and to select a candidate of their choice. Now, you say that the spending limits are lifted when and if monies are infused from the state party, et cetera. The legislators, I mean, is controlled by the party today, Senate, similar Senate, and the governor. And they can do what they want, and we can't respond to it. Now, what if it's triggered three days before the election? They don't have to serve notice to you or to Mr. Pacheco that they've already spent the money, allocated the money, but have not spent it. But you can't fight to level the playing field until after they, in fact, have spent it and you've been notified that they've spent it. They're not required by law, as we are, to send a notice that an independent expenditure has exceeded $50,000 or $100,000, whatever the case may be. They're not required by law to do that, which means that the members of this council, and one is running for citywide, are at a disadvantage. Not only are we at a disadvantage, but even the parties could be at a disadvantage. If one party decide they want to go and take control of small cities and control the league of cities, control statewide organizations, make it more political even though it's nonpartisan, they can employ a strategy and do that. We're treading in -- We're treading in dangerous water here, there's some sharks out there. Then what is the intent of the legislature? Shall we then impose on them, or have some legislation introduced that says that if the party is going to oppose a candidate, they must give six months' notice? They must let us know when they've exceeded $5,000? And therefore, you're prohibited from infusing money 45 days before the election? That's fair. Then who are we going to carry the legislation, with the governor signing it into law? That's the only protection that you're going to have. Otherwise, what we have here, as ordinances, law, is in direct conflict, and puts us at a disadvantage, and I'm not running. I mean, they won't have Nate Holden to kick around anymore. Yeah, we run for the border. Any case, that's a real problem. We had to correct it, we had to clean it up, and all introduce a motion to do what you're talking about. They're not going to enter the negotiation with you. They're not going to do that. They're going to change the law, to prohibit certain things that they are not doing, and see how they respond to that. If they don't show willingness to correct the problem before they create it, then you know your negotiations are going to be on death here, because they want the power, and they're not about to share it, as we speak. But your intentions are well received, and I understand what you're saying, but this is all about politics and power. You want to respond?
No, I would simply say that the ordinances before you, to implement them at a temporary basis for the second and fourth district, provides us the opportunity to see-
But you're talking about fixing the problem.
It provides us the opportunity to see what plays out in Sacramento, and whether or not that might have an effect on the laws that we want to-
They're not going to have any effect on them. We've got to be a little naive about this.
I asked that you push your button again. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise in support of this substitute motion. I think it is critical that we do something for the second and the fourth council district races, which are upcoming, in this dicey legal situation, which we find ourselves waiting for the state to determine what it is going to do. I think, nevertheless, we should not fail on our public responsibility to make sure that we have the most accountable, and public, and open elections. Furthermore, I wanted to ask a question of Ms. Pellam. In considering this particular ordinance, was there ever discussion about the raising of the limits, whether it should not necessarily be in an aggregate, but whether you could have a limit per organization? I think there are organizations that all of us who have campaigned know, go through a vigorous endorsement process, and I would hate to see somebody who managed to, by the strength of their candidacy, get 10 or 15 of these, limited in the way that those organizations could then support, just to their basic membership, without lifting the limits, some sort of, you know, message?
No, that wasn't one of the items specifically discussed for these ordinances this past spring.
Okay, that may be something, colleagues, that we might want to look at as a bit of future reform. And secondly, I would also just give a word of caution to colleagues, and you'll hear me say this time and time again, that what's important here, and what this does not do, and what is missing here, is that even though we've talked about reforming what trips the limits, we really need to look at, and this goes to what Councilmember Holden was talking about, we need to look at who is doing the spending, that we should not have independent expenditures or member communications that are friendly, that trip the limit for someone. They should really be a defensive mechanism, that when they are, when a member organization or independent expenditure is spending money against you, that then your limit, and not everybody's limit, is then freed up, so that it really would respond to the reality on the ground, not just the randomness of who is spending. And lastly, you'll hear me say this again, and I've asked the city Ethics Commission to look into this more deeply, we really need to look at what people are doing countrywide, or around this country, at different states, in terms of full public funding, and I really think that's going to be the answer, long term.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just feel like this ordinance that's before us this morning is, again, I understand the need to vote on this, and possibly enact it for the next couple of council races, but again, and if we had discussed item one, instead of sending it to the committee, I think a lot of us probably would have had the discussion of, I'm okay with this, maybe, for the next couple of council races that are happening, but I'm not okay with the process of you then going back and coming back with something that you think you can negotiate with the state, in reference to Prop 34. I have not been comfortable with the process, even though I think everyone thinks it's been exhaustive, and you think it's been long, and you think you've heard the testimony of a lot of stakeholders. I feel like the process of getting input into how we finally have meaningful campaign finance reform has been really flawed. And I know you have an attempt to talk to a lot of people, but, you know, I just feel like there are so many out there who have stakes in campaign finance reform. I know, a lot of the hearings were held on some of the possible changes, right in the middle of our last elections. You were holding hearings on changing the rules during the middle of the last election cycle. I don't know about the rest of the candidates, but I really did not find time to come down to City Hall and testify on, in your hearings on campaign finance reform during that election cycle. So, I guess I would just suggest that the process of how you begin getting this input, you begin talking to not only these candidates, but there was a slew of candidates that ran for city offices last time, and what attempt are you going to really make to get their input, to get input from the lobbyists, to get input from a lot of the organizations, the political action committees, a lot of the organizations that play in our campaigns? I've just been really unhappy with, you know, sometimes you have six people that show up at your hearings. I don't think that's a reflection of everybody that has a stake in our campaign finance reform, so I'm uncomfortable with you just going back and thinking that maybe you're getting everybody's input, and coming back with something that will be more temporary. Again, I think that's part of us trying to do this in a piecemeal attempt. We need to really have an exhaustive, comprehensive study of campaign finance. I would like to see some sort of a roundtable, where we all sit in a room and talk about this stuff, and we come up with ideas, and we back and forth on what works and what doesn't work, because I think sort of the hearing format that you've done has been ineffective, in my opinion.
If I might respond briefly. In terms of the surveys that I mentioned, we do have, last week mailed to all candidates and treasurers, a 10-page survey, which we believe is very detailed, and we're hopeful that we'll get a good response from candidates. And that's a starting point, that's not the endpoint. It's a first way to get some information, be able to then follow up with people individually, and get more feedback about how the program works, and how it works for them, or doesn't work for them. The other point I might mention is that we are in discussions, at this point, we look like we're having in early October, a conference in town that will be cosponsored, not a hearing like you typically see of the Ethics Commission, but one where we would have a day-long conference, where former candidates, consultants, voters, others could come and talk, and spend the day, thinking creatively about the issues, in light of the last election, and in light of the last four elections.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I intend to support this temporary measure, but let me just say that I think everybody has forgotten the most important persons that are affected by these campaign laws. It's not the candidates, it's the public. Okay? Let us remember that it's the public that has to deal with those people who are elected, in many cases, by special interests, that are willing to put up large amounts of money. And I know that there is a protection, under the Constitution, First Amendment rights, for the ability to make contributions, but I think that we need to explore, Leanne, I think we need to explore all the possibilities of how we can limit these influences of large amounts of money being put in, particularly at last moment, and by unidentified donors, who may be part of these committees. So, I think we need to move forward today, but if necessary, we should seek legislation in Sacramento that will cover local government races, so that the state officials don't have to feel like they're going to be limited by it, because they won't, under those circumstances, you'll never get it passed. But if it is applied to local government, particularly over certain population sizes, I think we can get some meaningful reform that will make it possible. And certainly, I think that Nate mentioned something very, that I think we can control, and that is that independent expenditure committees should not be allowed to make contributions past a certain date. I think that there should be a cutoff date, and I think we can do that legally, if we explore all the possibilities, that limits the time, let's say, two weeks before the election, or 10 days, whatever the case may be, that would be the last date. And when that report comes in, we need to know all the donors who are participants in that particular contribution, because they may exceed the limitation, because under their own name, they may have contributed to a number of campaigns, and they're exceeding the campaign contribution limits. So, these are things that we need to look at. I think that you have a very good idea, Janice. I think that perhaps we need to have a workshop, not just with candidates, but with people who are involved in the process, with some of the public members who are active, and I think, I think we need to go a lot further. I'm finished running, I've run enough times already, so I don't have to worry about it anymore, but as I've observed, and I've never supported matching funds, by the way, some of you may disagree with that, but my feeling is that First Amendment rights say, do I have to support, financially, with my taxes, somebody who I don't approve of what they're going to do? So, these are things that we need to look at, and I personally feel, if you can't get a certain amount of community support, then you shouldn't be in the race anyway. So, I think that there's a lot of avenues that we haven't crossed yet, that we need to look at. Perhaps the amount of money that can come in from lobbyists should be limited, I mean, in congregate, maybe there ought to be a cutoff period, when, say, if lobbyists have contributed, say, over $50,000 to a race-
Mr. Burnson.
That ought to be the limit. Okay? So, see, these are some of the things. I'm not going to push my button again, I think we belabored it, I'm going to support it, but let's get back and do a better job with this, okay?
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski. Mr. Pacheco.
I do appreciate everyone's comments on their concerns. My concern is strictly focused on the member-to-member communication, which is not dealing with independent expenditures. We can regulate and be innovative and creative on how we handle the independent expenditure field, in terms of limiting when they can spend, or how they spend it. But my concern is, when you're facing a situation where 65 or 70% of the voters are going to come on your election, are singled out by a party for direct communication with no limits, no disclosure requirements, as of yet, because I understand that's in dispute, and that is really where the playing field will be made unfair. That's really where they're going to use, to really take advantage of a loophole. And my biggest frustration is that, as we turn to the city rules, and we turn to ethics, when we talk about finding the door to legitimately counter that imbalance, there really is no guidance, there really is no mechanism that the Ethics Commission will give us, or the department will give us, in terms of, here's your door to counter that imbalance. And so, when you try to counter that imbalance on your own, and you fumble through the dark, you may end up being in violation of our own rules, by simply trying to defend yourself from this onslaught of money. And that's the most frustrating part, is that we sort of leave the candidates sort of to fend for themselves, and then we play gotcha, when they're trying to fend for themselves against these forces that are spending big money to get their candidates elected. That's really the concern also that I have with this, is that we have this unfair competition, and then we have people who are not even armed with any legal or legitimate mechanisms to counter that unfair competition. And that's really not fair to all the people who want to be serving here. So, I'm going to support this today, but I think there's a bigger issue here, and a bigger concern about Prop 34, and its impact on our city elections, and how it basically gives outside parties an ability to pick and choose who they're going to spend big bucks on, especially those big donors that come in without a moment's notice.
Thank you. Mr. Holden.
I mean, I'm going to support this temporary fix also, I think it's necessary. However, we're looking for something more permanent, that's why we're having this discussion. Mr. Pacheco, we don't need to ask Fair Political Practice Commission, the Legislature, or even the Ethics Commission, to address the problems which concern us. All we need to do is put a motion in, to say we are going to have a comprehensive study. It's like an interim study, that's the process they use in Sacramento. Look at the whole picture of election reforms, and contribution, and limitations, not only for your safeguard, but as Mr. Burnson said, for the public's interest, because they're the ones, in the long run, that's being disadvantaged by the infusion of large sums of money, designed to do harm to the system, I would say, the whole process. So, I would say that you need to initiate that for your own good, number one. Number two, I used to be chairman of the Election Reaportation Committee, as a member of California State Senate. And Fair Political Practice Commission didn't do very much, or do much breathing, without the authority being granted by the legislative body. Of course, they're always protecting their own self-interests, which they do, we do. And even at that, sometimes, some would cross the line, which they sometimes did. But I would say to you that this Prop 34 is something that's got to be considered, and the study that we began here locally should consider what the flaws are, as relates to our laws, and Prop 34. And we should share that information with the legislature, and say, here's how your law's got to be changed, in order to grant Los Angeles independence, to regulate and to control its elections, and keep them fair, and keep a level playing field. That's the process. Now, they may go have an interim study, and that means they're going to postpone it for a while. That's okay, but eventually, they will have to address the issue, if we get a qualified and energetic author. I think Ms. Goldberg could do something like that in the semi side, we got Mr. Alakon could do something like that in the Senate side, and we could merge the legislation, send it referred to interim, or whatever. But you can have a full hearing statewide on this issue. They're never going to negotiate, there is a conflict, because the legislature would never let them negotiate, and change the rules, tighten them up, to be compatible with what we have, and then they lose control and power over what we do here, who might or may not be elected. But I'm voting for this today.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, we have item five before us, a substitute motion, and item number five. Clerk, please open the roll on the substitute motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Substitute motion is approved. Fourth with on that item, please.
There are also four ordinances to be voted on.
Okay.
They have been passed out.
They have been distributed? Let's open the roll on the ordinances. Open the roll on the ordinances. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
The ordinances are approved, and we'll send those forthwith. Next item, please. Item number six, called special by Councilmember Zine. Before you speak, Mr. Zine, I'd like to take a minute to recognize some special guests that we have joining us. What a coincidence, they're from my district, but they're the guests of the Department of Water and Power this morning, five students in hard hats from Broaddus Elementary School, being hosted by DWP. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. I'm Walter Zeisel, Director of Communications at DWP, and we're here to present representatives from Broaddus Elementary, which is one of what we call two sustainable schools, that is part of our Cool Schools program. As you may know, we are in the process of planting trees at some 80 schools, over a period of four, five years, and Broaddus School is one of the two sustainable schools. There was about 200, over 220 trees planted on the campus, and there is a flooding problem in the district there, and so we also put in an infiltrator system, and the students have been wonderful, and the teachers, they drew something like 1,300 posters in promotion of the program. And I'd like to present the Assistant Principal, Mr. Schreuer, who can tell you a little bit more of what they did, as well as some of the students, they also have a poem they'd like to read, which is actually thanking DWP, but of course, it means the city, too. So, here's Mr. Schreuer. Here's Mr. Schreier.
Well, the big thing that it did, not only is the project unique, and will be the only school in the nation that has as many trees and grass, and being a pilot school, but the biggest thing was the pride in the community. The community is behind it. The children love it. From four-year-olds all the way up to the fifth grade, they have made posters, they've written letters, and they're taking pride in their school. And that's the big thing. Thank you.
Do you want to read the poem?
This poem that they're going to read, by the way, these are second and fourth graders. The fifth graders that wrote the poem are now in middle school, so they're taking over. They're going to give you their little version of a poem to DWP.
Broadus is a cool place to be, and it is all because of DWP. You provided the solution for cleaner air and less pollution. Green trees, bright flowers, and sun grass. We have a permanent gift that will last. Rain will be conserved on our site. You gave us the drains to store it right. Our campus has been beautified. Everyone is so very satisfied. You made us a sustainable school. Now everyone knows that we are cool. The green team is helping each other, school and community together.
The students, students are Erica Aguilar, Isabel Barajas, Jessica Beltran, Ivan Servantes, and Louis Mejia. The teachers are Veronica Devia and Amy Morland. Assistant Principal is Don Schreier. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to you replicating the program throughout the entire city of Los Angeles. Back to the business at hand. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item number six, a couple of questions I have. Is there a representative from DWP?
We can bring some of the kids back.
Yeah, bring the kids back with the hard hats, they'll be able to respond to this. Is there still a real estate section within Department of Water and Power is my first question?
DNC, Water and Power, yes, there is.
Okay, why aren't they using that section for these properties?
Initially, this contract was let because we did not have staff at that time. The CBLS was supposed to sell and market, market and sell our excess properties, and also provide us with some software and computer training that would allow us to keep track, better track of our, manage our files better. They are not complete with the computer project, and half of the contract is to allow additional funds so that they may continue with the computer part of the contract. And then there are also a few properties left that need to, that they're in the middle of being sold, so we would like to finish that also with them. We have increased staff since this contract was initially let a year ago, and we're working up to, we just don't have enough right now to do the regular day-to-day DWP work and sell and market excess properties.
And regarding the contract, it's a, seems to be a very lucrative contract with a million dollars plus another five hundred, or $250,000 added to the contract amount of $1 million. Commissions, it also mentions commissions. In addition to the dollars they're being paid, they're receiving commissions on the properties that they're selling?
On the sales, yes. Again, the, the one point some odd million plus the 250 that we're requesting now is basically for task-based assignments, which include mainly this computer program.
Well, it's deceptive in that the document that we've been provided with talks about the excess property in addition, and it's miscellaneous. It's couched in there with miscellaneous activities. And how many properties are they currently engaged in that they want to dispose of?
Good morning, Craig Luna. Good morning, Craig Luna. Craig Luna, Department of Water and Power. They have completed about five sales so far, and they currently have 15 sales in process now.
And how many more parcels are they attempting to dispose of?
All told, it will be about 18 or so.
So if you look at the ones they've already, are they in escrow with the majority of them?
About a third of them are in escrow now, yes.
It just seems an excessive amount of money for a project when they're already receiving commissions on sale of the property to be paid to market a property and then to get paid a commission on top of that.
They're, the actual monies that are being set aside have nothing to do with the actual sales of the property. They're being used to install and develop a proprietary database system to help us do the property management in-house, so we won't have to go out and contract out for the property management portion of our real estate duties.
And I understand this went to arbitration?
Yes, it did.
There was a conflict with the employee representative organizations?
Yes, it did.
So the majority of the dollars, the dollars they're going to appropriate are going for infrastructure, not so much for sales of property?
Absolutely. They're completely separate.
Okay, well, the document shows the sales of property, and then with some miscellaneous, and that's where I think there's some confusion.
Okay.
So in the future, if they could be clear on that, to show that we're not mixing apples and oranges when we're talking about exorbitant sums of money.
We'll work to do that, yes.
Thank you.
Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll on item number six. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please. Item number eight, called special by Councilmember Galanter. Item number eight is now before us. Ms. Galanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I called this special because subsequent to the committee's consideration of the item, I was informed that the CIO needed to add some details into the written report or the oral report. And so we wanted to give them an opportunity to complete whatever they need to do here before the council adopts it.
Thank you.
So with your permission, I'll ask the CIO's office to do their thing here, and let's get on with it.
John Jones, Office of the CIO. I'd like to clarify that our recommendation to approve the proposal is intended to reflect that we're in agreement with the CFO of the Department of Airports, that a private sale of the revenue bonds is in their best interest as opposed to a competitive bid. I also would like to clarify that the document resolution will not be coming back to council for approval, but council will have oversight pursuant to the provisions of Section 245 of the City Charter.
Thank you.
So with that, I would recommend approval of the item.
Any other members wishing to speak on item number eight? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please. Item number 14, which is the opening of a bid that was held on the desk at the request of Councilmember Burnson. Have you been able to get staff here to answer Mr. Burnson's questions? I see staff coming forward. Mr. Burnson, do you wish to repeat your questions?
Basically, I'd like to know where these pipeline franchises are going to be located.
I'm Bob Kamut with the Department of Transportation.
Hold my time while they're getting their folks adjusted.
It's being held.
Go ahead.
For the Tosco Pipeline, there are 16 pipelines involved totaling 37 miles within city right-of-way. And those pipelines are located in the area of the airport, LAX, in the San Pedro area, and in the Boyle Heights area.
I see.
Now, we have maps I could refer to to be very specific.
No, I'm sorry, I just, I just want to know if you've made, if you've worked with the community and worked with the council offices, including the new council offices of these areas, to make sure that these communities are not going to be adversely impacted. They are going to be somewhat impacted while they're installed, but I would hope that you've done your homework on it, that's all.
Yeah. At least, we have worked with the communities and the council offices. These pipelines are all in place now, just a question of granting the franchise to this company.
I see. Okay, thank you. These are already in place.
Thank you very much. Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Clerk, what exactly is item 14 before us?
Item number 14 is pursuant to a notice of sale published on June 29, 2001, for a common carrier pipeline franchise in the city of Los Angeles. One bid has been submitted by Union Pipeline Company, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Tosco Corporation with a certified check in the sum of $500 as a guarantee of the bid of the subject pipeline franchise.
So the action is to open the bidding?
It is.
Chair recognizes Ms. Hahn.
So these pipelines are already in place? This is just for the franchise agreement?
They are in place. The franchisee of record is a different company. Pipelines were purchased by Tosco.
Right.
And by Union Pipeline Company. And they, those companies are simply seeking franchises from the city of Los Angeles to continue to operate.
So this is not about constructing new pipelines?
No, it is not.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the opening of the bidding. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
The bids are open. Next item, please.
Item number 15 is also an opening of a bid pursuant to notice of sale published on June 29, 2001, for a pipeline franchise in the city of Los Angeles. One bid has been submitted by Tosco Corporation with a certified check in the sum of $500 as a guarantee of the bid on the subject pipeline franchise.
So this is the same subject matter, a different step in the process. Members wishing to speak? Clerk, please open the roll on item 15. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Mr. Clerk, we have a request by Councilmember Pacheco to take item number 27 out of order. We have a number of speaker cards on this item. Let's go ahead and do that. Please announce what the item is.
Item number 27 is a motion, Pacheco Reyes et al., requiring departments to report on funds for the Housing Trust Fund.
Okay, and we are required to hold a public hearing. Mr. Pacheco, did you wish to speak before the public hearing?
Simply would ask that we have a five-minute public hearing. I've spoken with the advocates, and they will have a few speakers, and then we go on to the matter.
Okay, there are quite a few cards on this item, so I will go through the names. And if you wish to defer your time to somebody else, please indicate by sort of waving your hand like that. Nicole Bryant, first of all, please come forward, to be followed by Luke Vincent. Ms. Bryant?
Hello, my name is Nicole Bryant, and I am the Project Assistant of Concerned Citizens of Los Angeles. I am here today in support of the Housing Trust Fund, and I am here presenting Concerned Citizens of Los Angeles. There is a severe shorting, shortage. There is a severe shortage of affordable, quality housing in Los Angeles. There are many programs that are designed to accomplish the end goal of quality, affordable housing, but many of these programs lack the funding to be fully effective. The Housing Trust Fund is a means to a necessary end because it provides annual funding for the benefit of the multifaceted Los Angeles community. So I believe it will be a great benefit to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vincent, to be followed by Sandra McNeil.
Hello, my name is Luke Vincent with the Hollywood Community Action Network, and I want to urge you to support the funding sources that have been recommended to you for this Housing Trust Fund. We have a tremendous housing crisis. I'm hearing terrible stories of apartments jumping from $600 to $1,600 a month, of single bedrooms renting for $600 a month in bad shape. And clearly, with the time it takes to develop, the housing crisis will get worse for at least three years before it can ever turn around. I also want to urge you to make sure that this money is spent for its intended purchase purposes of low-income and no-income housing, and not diverted to anything else. And whatever you can do also to help the situation with zoning, especially for affordable housing developers.
Thank you.
Is needed. We need also, tremendous need we see for singles, for single individuals, rooms in singles, that haven't been built in this city for 60 or 70 years. So this zoning issues need to be addressed along with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sandra McNeil, to be followed by Sister Diane Donahue.
I'm Sandra McNeil with the Figueroa Corridor Coalition for Economic Justice. As we see significant public and private investment and development all along the Figueroa Corridor, we also see that accompanied by land speculation, increasing property values, rapidly increasing rents, that are driving out working families. And as a coalition concerned, that development in this, in this community serve all of the families and workers that are part of the community, we encourage support of policy that will, in a fundamental way, serve to stabilize communities and keep folks here. I'll defer the rest of my time to other folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sister Donahue, to be followed by Reverend June Boutelier.
My name is Sister Diane Donahue with Esperanza Community Housing. I was the co-chair with Lauren Saunders on the Crisis Housing Task Force that made the report in March of 2000. That one of the first priorities was the establishment of the Housing Trust Fund, which happened. And today, we're talking about endorsing it in terms of $100 million each year. And that is absolutely basic. Because of the incredible shortage of affordable housing, and more to the point, very often, when we talk about affordable, we're talking at 80% of median income. Nonprofits like Esperanza serve the 30% to 50% families. That makes an incredible amount of difference. And so a housing trust fund that really addresses affordability across the board, and also transitional housing, homeless, first-time homebuyers, I mean, there's a variety that's in here. And it, it addresses the crisis in a very specific and targeted way. I really ask for your support in endorsing the $100 million. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reverend Jean, to be followed by Charles Suheda.
The Los Angeles Coalition on Hunger and Homelessness wholeheartedly supports the positions that have already been expressed to you. Thanks those that have created and supported this motion, and yields the rest of the time.
Thank you very much. Charles Suheda, to be followed by Maria Cabildo.
Hello, I'm Charles Suheda from Hollywood Presbyterian Church. I'm Director of Community Service there, and I just would like to voice my support for the $100 million Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I would like to just briefly speak from the point of view of a social service provider. We find ourselves in a crisis management mode when it comes to housing. The most vulnerable population are those persons with incomes of less than $10,000 a year. Generally, these people have $500 to $750 per month incomes, and there's really no place we can refer them. We have a very difficult time placing them. They're simply one step away from homelessness, and there's simply no shelters to send people to. I know there's been a great deal of enthusiasm for economic redevelopment in the city and for upscale and market-rate housing, but the affordable housing issue really needs to be addressed, and I would appreciate your support on that.
Thank you very much. Maria Cabildo, to be followed by Robin Hughes.
My name's Maria Cabildo, and I'm the Executive Director of East LA Community Corporation. And I just wanted to voice our support for the Housing Trust Fund. Also, to relate that we currently have a 500-plus waiting list for low-income families who are interested in purchasing single-family homes and for rental housing. So this is a real critical need in the city.
Thank you. Robin Hughes, to be followed by Beth Steckler, and we do have just a few more minutes.
Hi, I'm sorry, Robin Hughes couldn't stay for this. They asked me to stand in for her. I'm Barbara Sandoval from Fannie Mae. Just wanted to applaud you all for your leadership on this issue. As you know, housing- As you know, housing is a critical need in the city of Los Angeles. Fannie Mae is a critical partner to the city and we are very supportive of the idea of a Housing Trust Fund and getting to the goal of $100 million. So thank you again for your leadership on this. I hope we get unanimous support on this motion and we look forward to celebrating with you in the future on the Housing Trust Fund. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. We are now over the five minutes that we allotted for public hearing. We will take two more speakers and make the rest of the speaker cards part of the file. Beth Steckler. And the final speaker will be Paul Beesmeyer.
Thank you. My name is Beth Steckler with Housing L.A. I want to thank you for introducing this motion and supporting $100 million for the Housing Trust Fund. This feasibility study is really moving in the right direction and we're very, very excited about the broad level of support that we have both on the council and in the community. Thank you very much. Paul Beesmeyer has left. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. Yes, Paul's left. My name is Lou Bernardi. I'm with the Los Angeles Housing Partnership. Urge you to support the motion before you. The need and the demand are quite obvious. The data's been shared with both the council and the mayor and we hope that you move forward with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I thank all the speakers really for their brevity. This was great. I know there's still another dozen or so cards. For those members of the public who did not get an opportunity to speak, we will make your cards part of the file, but this does close the public hearing. The chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President and colleagues, before I move on to say anything, can I have all the individuals who are present here in support of the motion stand up so that the council can see you're here for this? Colleagues, as you know, the city of Los Angeles is facing many issues and many critical ones. Nothing as critical as providing someone shelter, though. And we are way behind in the times. When you look at our sister cities in terms of how they support their housing needs and how they generate local income to match and leverage against state and federal government resources, you will find out that Los Angeles is at the lowest end, or one of the lowest ends, at $23 per person annually for affordable housing, compared to New York at $89, Chicago at $76, San Jose at $71, and Seattle at $66. This just cannot continue anymore. We need to step up and really match and be a part of the solution to our affordable housing crisis. The last time someone spoke on this and we talked about a particular project, one of the speakers called affordable housing and the solution to affordable housing, a burden. And I simply was offended by the fact that they felt that they were not a part of the solution. My colleague Cindy Miskowski pointed out that the truer and more precise counterstatement was that it's unfortunate that individuals in our community consider providing affordable housing a burden. It is not a burden. It is a responsibility that we all share to make sure that all individuals in this city have an opportunity to raise their families in an environment that's healthy for their children, because we know that when we have healthy homes, they will be good productive students and obviously that benefits us all. So I really look forward to the reports. And for those of you who have tracked this issue, this motion is really another opportunity to reinforce Mayor Hahn's commitment to this issue on the campaign. He committed to providing $100 million. During his inauguration speech, he focused and highlighted the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So now it's time to really make matters, really to have a meeting of the minds as to where we are going to find the $100 million in the budget. So I really want to get the ball rolling and today we have an opportunity to do that. So I appreciate all your support and I appreciate all the advocates for coming out today.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do many things well in this city. We are sometimes on the cutting edge. We provide solutions where they have not been before, but we do a lousy job with housing. Three out of four of our low-income families spend over 75% of their income on housing. Let that sink in. Three out of four spend over 75% of all of their income on low-income housing. We have a 10-year waiting list for Section 8 housing. One out of nine of all of our units are substandard, they're slum housing. And already Councilmember Pacheco told us how much we spend per capita on public housing. We're the second worst in the country, after Riverside, on how much we actually spend on public housing and how much we give in terms of subsidy. This is a critical step. My colleague, Councilmember Holden, was saying, where is this money going to come from? Is it going to come out of the police department? Is it going to come out of here? Well, we are doing this study to show exactly where it can come from, from a linkage fee that doesn't put anybody out of business, but invites them, as Councilmember Pacheco said, to be part of the solution, by looking perhaps at an increment in terms of the hotel transient fee. We have to look at the entire range of options because the greatest burden of all is not having housing. That is the burden that this city faces and we have failed time and time again. This body can take a lead. We have a mayor who wants to walk hand-in-hand with us across the finish line. And $100 million, let's not kid ourselves, while a huge amount of money will only begin to address the housing crisis in this city, only begin to. We also need a citywide inclusionary zoning ordinance. We need to make sure that we have low-income housing be a part of all development that we do, no matter how small, to say that none of us will stand by and all of us will be part of the solution. I'd like to specifically thank Acorn, Hollywood Can. I'd like to thank all my friends from Coalition L.A., from the Coalition to End Hunger and Homelessness for coming here, for being patient with us, and we will win this together. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
As I want to first thank the speakers for your orderly fashion, your demeanor here at this council session. Very impressed with that.
They're setting the example for us.
And I've seen other groups come before us, Rant and Raven and Creating Chaos. So again, I thank you for your orderly fashion this morning. Many candidates, when they run for political office, talk about housing, what they're going to do for housing. And I know during my campaign, I did the same thing. I completely support this and I know that with the federal government cutting back on the dollars that are being appropriated to subsidizing housing and affordable housing, we need to do something on a local level to make sure there's dollars so people can have a quality of life. I know the West San Fernando Valley that I represent has a housing crisis along with other portions of the city, so I join my colleagues in fully supporting this measure. And I know with the city of $5 billion budget, we'll be able to find money so we can appropriate to afford a quality of life for the people. Again, thank you for attendance and thank you for your support.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
First, I want to thank the folks that are here today to support this housing issue. I think what's critical is that the study not only talks about where we're going to get the money, but we remember that as a city family, we need to start coordinating enforcement issues. We need to start looking at a multi-prong approach. Because we also are talking about how you start rehabilitating our historic buildings, how we preserve the character of our communities, while maintaining an inclusionary process. I know we will be tested in regards to how we start establishing this mix. But we are behind in establishing a methodology by which we can provide a mix that's healthy for all communities. So I applaud the efforts of my fellow councilmembers. I look forward to working with the mayor's office and being very clear to the departments that we need to communicate how it is that we combine and leverage our capacity as a city family to start looking at this issue at a multi-pronged level. I want to thank the community and all the advocates that are here today. It's a very important step. It's very exciting to take it to another level. Thank you so much.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, here we go again, reinventing the wheel. Fact of the matter is that we have a project in the Ninth District that came before the council, came before the committee, and by a vote of two to one in favor of exempting a project for affordable housing, which was required under the CRA rules and regulations, who was chair of that committee? The point is, is that the vote was two to one. One person who voted in favor of exemption is no longer here, they're serving in Sacramento. So, you know, it's not what we say, it's what we do. Now, we're not the federal government. And talk is cheap and they make you feel good, but what do we do about it? And what we did by majority vote was to exempt that project, which is substantial, downtown Boca Hill, from the affordable housing percentage that's required by law. Wasn't no vote. Here it is. But I'm glad to see that next time that matter comes before the council, because it's been stalled now, that the vote will be in support of that percentage of affordable housing which is needed. And what they do is give the developers an incentive. If you provide so many units of affordable housing, then you get all kinds of tax credits, you get tax increment credits from the federal, from the state. And if you don't, you don't get that. You don't get other benefits that the city provide as well. So that's how we make up the $23 per person to maybe $100 per person and so on and so on. But it doesn't come from our general fund. Where should we take it? The fire department, police, other essential services? What program is we, are we going to sacrifice in order to meet our needs, which is imposed on us by the federal government? Too many poor people, too many homeless, no jobs, improper education, improper training, which generate failures in life? And we have them all over the country, but here in Los Angeles, what we're concerned about, and therefore, the feds do not give us enough money to set aside so many 88-type applications. So we're stuck. We can only maximize our effort and do the very best that we can. And that's all we can do. As long as we know in our hearts that we made the best effort for all those who are in need for the city of Los Angeles. But there are many different programs which really offsets and creates, generates more money per person than the $23 listed here in this motion, per person. So I would say to you that it's a goal, and let it be just that, a goal, because you're going to have some people squealing and yelling and holling when you have to sacrifice some programs, which is probably not likely to occur. We have to talk to the new mayor about it.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
I know the new mayor. I rise today in support of increasing the Housing Trust Fund to $100 million. I think that is the bare minimum this city ought to begin with. And clearly, it's something that I campaigned on in my election. A neighboring city of Santa Monica has $25 million in their Housing Trust Fund. We are nowhere close at this point to addressing the housing need in our, all of our communities and all of our neighborhoods. I've been involved with Habitat for Humanity for over a decade, which at one point was like the 10th largest home builder in the country. And the man that started Habitat for Humanity, Millard Fuller, said about 20 years ago, if every city council in the country would make affordable housing a number-one priority on their agenda, we could absolutely eradicate substandard housing in this country. He said, in, by the end of the millennium. That was 20 years ago. Clearly, city councils across this country did not make it a priority. So I'm proud that we're about to put our money where our mouth is and really endorse the prospect of $100 million in this trust fund. The last time in my community Habitat for Humanity was proposing to build 26 homes, we had over 200 applications from families that had no other way of ever, in their dreams, possibly being able to have an opportunity to own their own home. It broke our hearts to have to take that list of applications and narrow it down to 26 families. We have a crisis. We have a crisis of affordable housing, of low-income housing, of market-rate housing. And hopefully, with this $100 million trust fund, we'll be able to address all the kinds of housing, shelters that we need in this city. But I think the other issue is planning. I've always been disappointed how this city plans our city, the way it will look and the way it will behave in the next 50 years. And we need to make sure that all these types of housing are planned equally throughout the entire city and that we don't plan this city in terms of our housing in 15 pieces, but we really look at our city as a whole and how we will look and how we will behave in the next 50 years. And let me just say, the only part about this I have a problem with is the, to take the recommendations from the Housing Crisis Task Report, because I do think the one missing component in this is the business community. And I know there was a suggestion from that report that talked about linkage fees or whatever, and I know the business community had a problem with it. I'd like to invite the business community back into this discussion, to come up with how they are going to help us get to this $100 million, because it really does impact businesses. We've got corporations coming to the city that really don't have a place to house their employees. Up in Silicon Valley, the business community voluntarily contributed to that Housing Trust Fund without linkage fees. So let's invite the business community back to this table, back to this, this formula of how we come up with $100 million, because I think they've probably got some better solutions in linkage fees where they can help in this, in this process.
Thank you. Ms. Calanter.
Thank you. I also, of course, want to endorse the addition of money to the funding for the Housing Trust Fund. I have spent the last 20-something years, a lot longer than I've been on the council, working very hard to see the construction of affordable housing, not just in the neighborhoods that are already low- and moderate-income neighborhoods, but throughout the city, including many parts of the district I represent. And I, I want to lend my support to this effort to provide more funding so that the city will be able to invest in housing for moderate and low-income and very low-income people as a way of addressing both the homeless problem and the problem of working families finding that way too much of their income is required to support their housing. But also, the other reason I rose is I never go anywhere without asking for help. And just as I want to lend my support to the group who's come here today and all of the people you represent who need this housing, I really want to ask for your support in helping me with a number of projects in my neighborhood. One in particular has become extremely controversial. It is, it is one of the very few places left in the city where we have room to construct a sizable amount of housing, including housing for low- and moderate and very low-income people, without having to displace anybody, so that we're not going to compound the problem as we try to solve it. And the group that has been remarkably quiet in helping to resolve the issues and to get that housing built has unfortunately been the housing activist community. And I know many of you, I've worked with many of you for years and years and years, since way before I was on the council. I'm entirely supportive of what you're doing, but I need your help as well and the community needs your help as well. We are bogged down in a controversy that is, it sounds, well, it's ridiculous, basically. It should not be a question of whether housing is appropriate on an empty lot or not. Housing is appropriate. We need housing very, very badly and I need your help to make sure that it happens. So I want... Hello? Yes, thank you. I was just wondering whether to take that personally. I want to join enthusiastically in supporting the trust fund. I want to ask you to join me equally enthusiastically in getting some housing built.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
Well, ironically, my colleague has just brought to mind a subject that I was going to speak about. It's great to put this money into the trust fund and I intend to support it. But I wonder how many of you, particularly those who are newly elected, are going to have the, I'll use the word guts instead of some other word, to stand up and be willing to support a project like Playa Vista, like Ms. Calanter is doing, when the pressure is put to you? And I must tell you that I must commend her for this, and I've been involved in this in the planning process. We can do many things more than we've done. I don't, I don't totally agree that we've done a terrible job. I think we've done the best job we can with the resources we have at hand, Mr. Garcetti. At least 20% of all of our money from redevelopment projects must go into housing and I understand a lot more than that has gone in, in this city. Plus, we've supported a lot of, a lot of projects that we could with the money that we have available without rating other vital services. But one of the things we can do, and I've tried to do through the years, and maybe hopefully this new council... this new council will be supportive, is to make it more desirable and easier to do business in the city of Los Angeles. You know, we've shortened the time that it takes to get approval on projects considerably from when I first came on the council. It was, it used to take you a year and a half for an environmental clearance. And people stopped doing business in this city and stopped building housing and bringing jobs because it was tough to do that here. Well, we did make some changes. We didn't make as many as we had hoped, but we did make some changes. We have shortened that process. There's a lot more we can do to make it more desirable and to create this housing. And with the housing will come jobs and more prosperity. So I would urge all of you to, when you look at projects that come before you in your district, take a look and see, obviously, you know you're going to get opposition. You get opposition on the most important things that you can have in your community. Churches and schools are the things you get the greatest opposition on. And the housing you need, you're going to get opposition on that. But we have to be able to stand up and take a stand on the projects that we think are appropriate and what will benefit the city in the long run. And I challenge the council, as long as you're in this frame of mind, to put this money in the trust fund. That's a great first step. But we've got to do a lot more, and I'll be happy to work with you to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
I look forward with working with the affordable housing community and establishing many approaches to making this trust fund work. People who develop affordable housing are also in business, the business of creating housing for people at all income levels, and that's something I support. And I met with the advocates yesterday and talked about the need to create strategies and implementation that incense and creates and stimulates development and does not discourage development, so that we can truly create a downtown that is a 24-hour city to bring workers closer to their jobs, to reduce the impacts of transportation, to reduce gridlock, and to make a better quality of life. So I look forward to a very open, very critical, analytical, and honest dialogue on creating a package of incentives to create more housing.
Mr. Holden.
I'm going to call a previous question tomorrow. It sounds good, and I support the trust fund if we can ever get it. But I think information is always good. And to reiterate and to suggest what's occurred in the past, history teaches us a good lesson. For an example, Mr. Weiss's predecessor, he's not serving as a supervisor, was supporting affordable housing. Upfront advocate. They built a lot of expensive stuff now, Wilshire Boulevard and so on, but you know what I mean. And they created redevelopment area in Studio City area. They had a bunch of people in this room saying, "No, if you create a redevelopment area, then you bring affordable housing, and we don't want that." And then he got moved to the Board of Supervisors, and the person of his choice was running to succeed him. But because he supported affordable housing, creating a redevelopment area in Studio City, lost 90% of the vote. And his selected person to succeed him lost to a guy named Mr. Fuhrer. But the area was created in spite of that, notwithstanding that was to follow. When his successor was elected, he immediately repealed the requirement to establish a redevelopment area which would have brought affordable housing to that community. So if we speak here today, saying what we want and what we need, I agree. But when your feet are put to the fire, are you going to follow through? That's the question. Some neighbors, some councilpersons will, will tell it as they see it and follow through with a commitment. You will measure the strength and the commitment of the individual by how they carry out the order, order of the day. And I would say that each of us will have to face that. There are councilmembers sitting here who say, "I don't want to talk to that developer who wants to build affordable housing in certain areas because I know there will be a protest, and I don't want to take the heat." And I can cite you project by project by project. So when they make these, make me feel-good speeches, I get a little sick sometime. I really, really do. And I would say to you that, yes, I support it. Yes, it should be a goal, and that's why, like Mike, he gave me a lot of affordable housing in my district, working on that committee. And the people are staying there. They have a shelter over their head, and they can afford to stay there. I would say to you that, yes, I support it. When the chips are down, what are we going to do? Tuck our tail and run? Or we're going to stand up and do what's right and vote for the affordable housing? I'm going to say one thing, and I'll sit down, and I won't push my button again. What I might, what we might suggest then, is an amendment. You think about it later on, that each developer, have a place where a developer can go and say, "I want to put affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles," and choose certain areas where they like to put that affordable housing. And the zoning were permitted. And see how many of us stand up and say, "Oh, let's go with that. That's a good idea." They'll pay for it, no federal subsidy, no state assistance, no city assistance. All they want to do is bill, 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 and we're telling them, "No." But we need to have that kind of an open-door policy, and maybe we ought to do a motion to hold a few feet to the fire.
Mr. Reyes.
It's very heartening to hear the support, in particular, hearing Mr. Burnson talking about how we move forward and expanding our horizons, if you will. But we do have great opportunities. We have heavy rail stations with empty lots on top. We have light rail stations being designed. We have tools like transit-oriented districts. We can concentrate housing with commercial. And why not schools? Why not childcare centers? Why not build a city that makes sense, where we connect our needs with our daily lives, our daily routines? This is before us. We have these opportunities. The challenge is, how do we get to the point where we can begin strategizing with, again, our departments and changing the culture and how they see the code issues, the restrictions that prevent us from being able to be a little bit more experimental with our transit nodes? In my tenure working with the council, I can say I've worked on over 5,000 housing units. But that required for us to be a little bit more creative, changing the parking requirements so that instead of giving priority to an automobile, we use that space to provide childcare services or a learning center or things that cause diversion for our youth. So this is the horizons. These are the visions that I know we can embrace. Let's put the tools together. Let's work together in concert with the mayor's office. Let's bolster up the capacity of the housing department, the other departments, to look at a, again, approach that's a little bit more comprehensive. I'm heartened by Mr. Burnson's words and that we'll get that support and how we look at the planning department, building and safety, and being a little more comprehensive in our approach. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll try to keep this brief, but I think it is a really healthy discussion to be having. And sometimes, it's best for these discussions, not necessarily just to be in committee alone where things can be heard, maybe on the radio, but I think it's important for this debate to be had very publicly at the beginning of our new council, because this has to be a priority and something that we all on this, in this horseshoe, learn about. And to address specifically what Councilmember Holden was bringing up, there are, and this is precisely what the study is about, revenue streams that we can look at. Repayment from the earthquake repair fund, the loans on the earthquake repair fund. We can look again at the linkage fees, other things. We need to identify this and talk about the infrastructure issues that Councilmember Reyes was bringing up as well. And what Councilmember Burnson was talking about, I'm not talking specifically about the housing department or this or that. I think that we have done a terrible job, not because that's what I hear internally, but because I've spent nine months walking every single day in the neighborhood, and people who are struggling to get a home, those are the people telling us that we're still doing a terrible job. It is, you're right, a funding issue. It is whether or not we will give those resources to be there. And we do have an affordable housing ordinance that has gone down the road of what you're asking for, so that people get a 25% density bonus, so that there's already a streamlining of permitting for those people who want to build affordable housing. So for those developers, I will take that heat, Mr. Holden. I will engage with them, and I invite them to come and start sitting down with us, and let's make sure that we can do that together, because each and everyone that comes to us that wants to build affordable housing and be part of that solution, we are going to try to lay out the red carpet for them in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. The chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I think the specific number in question here is not the primary concern that I would wish to raise. I think it is a given that we have a responsibility to discharge, and we ought to do it. I do think we should see this in a larger context. Of course, the need, the fundamental need of affordable housing has been before us for a considerable amount of time. We have worked hard in our respective districts to make things happen. The public record speaks for itself in that regard. But now is an opportunity to expand what we've done. It is essentially an opportunity to extend the capacity of the respective organizations, many of which happen to be nonprofits, to build affordable housing. What does that do? It deepens the indigenous participation of those developers and those communities that want to see an increase in the quality of life that they can then enjoy. This then affords them an opportunity, as many of them will indicate and have indicated, the opportunity, again, to leverage these resources so that that which we have done can be extended and/or expanded over and over and over again. I believe that this is not only the right thing to do, I frankly believe it is imperative, and I should think that we should move forward with a unanimous vote today to cause something of significance to happen and send a message loud and clear that we are intent on making affordable housing happen in the city of Los Angeles in a significant way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Clerk, please open the roll on item number 27. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Before, before we proceed to the next item, let me just say, Mr. Garcetti was right when he said this was an absolutely healthy and great debate and discussion that we had today. In particular, I want to recognize and thank the senior members for imparting their challenges, their knowledge, their wisdom, and their insight on this particular issue. I think this is just one example of that relaying of the information and experience that the senior members will be doing for the next two years. Today happened to be in a public forum here in the council session, but I know for a fact that there's various private discussions as well, where issues and knowledge and insight is being shared with the younger, newer members, and I want to thank them especially for that. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 34A. This is a request by the city attorney that this matter be continued one week until July 24th. That's a closed-session item 34A.
Without objection, 34A is continued.
That brings you back to item number 18, called special, inasmuch as a member of the public wishes to speak.
Item number 18, we have one speaker card. I'd like to call forward Mr. Larry Green.
Hi, my name is Larry Green, and I just wanted to say real quickly, I was approached by a man who works for the president, and he asked me if I'd be kind enough to reduce the amount of time I spend speaking. And I'm going to do it, because I like you very much, Mr. President. And I think you're right, but I don't limit your rights to speak, and maybe I am guilty of being a little bit too enthusiastic and too interested with the whole process, but that's a good piece of criticism, and thanks for that, Mr. Padilla. Thank you. I just want to say real quickly, I support this. This is an item to do with the North Valley area police station, lots of money going to be spent. I support it. I'm Larry Green. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Any members wishing to speak on item number 18? Mr. Zine.
The event yesterday, the grand opening of the Valley Communications Center in Councilman Burnson's district, showed what the Valley's now starting to receive in additional benefits from their tax dollars. And I toured that along with Councilmember Padilla and saw state-of-the-art facilities going to be in line to handle 9/11 calls. And I think along that line, when we're trying to show the San Fernando Valley that we're doing something to increase services, that this particular project adds to that where they're going to have a new station. The only question I have is that we have sufficient personnel to staff that station so they can respond to those calls that are going to be coming from the public.
Thank you very much. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Zine's point is well-taken on the need for staff, and obviously, that issue on recruitment is something that we need to pay special attention to. But he's also right that this one, a stand-alone, that is delivering the new Valley Police Station, something requested and committed to over 10 years ago, is now being able to be brought to fruition. I compliment the Bureau of Engineering, the CAO, the CLA for finding a way to make this happen and to hold firm with the commitment to the Valley for providing that station. It's much needed. It's an area that long ago was determined to need that extra station, and that the will of this council was to start the process, to buy the land, to get things prepared, and now find the way to build it and get it built is, I think, a commitment to all the taxpayers in the city, but particularly to those in the Valley, to say that this was what was promised, and this is how we are going to deliver it.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to speak on item 18? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Fourth with on that item, please.
Mr. President, item number 22 is next. A member of the public wishes to speak.
Yes, we have several cards on this item. Ms. Perry, how much long, or how much time do you wish for a public comment period?
Is it on? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very important item, and we have a number of community people here today. Lisa Savino from Little Tokyo Service Center has selected the names of, I think, six people to put the views of the community on the record, so that I ask you to give them their consideration within five minutes.
Five minutes?
Thank you.
Five-minute public hearing. I'd like to call forward first Bill Watanabe, to be followed by Michelle Montes.
Thank you very much. I'm Bill Watanabe, director of the Little Tokyo Service Center. We've been providing services in Little Tokyo for the last 21 years. I'd like to thank the council for letting us address this issue. It's very important to us. I'd like to especially thank the previous council members who discussed this last month to give us additional time so that we can work out a resolution. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Galanter, who was presiding at the time, because she really showed a lot of sensitivity and understanding to help us, to give the time that we need to work through this issue. Councilmember Jan Perry and Mr. Ron Deaton, we've had a chance to meet with them. They called together all of the principal parties. We've come to an understanding. We feel that we have a resolution to this, to allow the building of the gymnasium at First Street North. We're going to work with the city council. We're going to work with the city to make this happen. I think the community is very happy to be able to be at this point after many, many years of trying to find a site for this rec center in Little Tokyo. We have over 100 community groups that are in support of this project. We think that it'll be very important, not only for Little Tokyo, not only for the young people and for the seniors, but for the downtown area as well, because this will be a very important project that will add not only for recreation and sports, but will be a draw for people to come from all over the state to participate in tournaments in basketball, volleyball, martial arts, cultural activities, as well as theater arts. In the next three months, we want to be able to move ahead. We're very eager to move with the city. There are a number of funding opportunities that we want to apply for, so we're very eager, and we thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much. Michelle Montes, to be followed by Tony Recaza.
Yes, hello. My name is Michelle Montes. I am 15. I am a junior at Taft High School and a resident at Little Tokyo. I live at Casa Juega. First of all, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Ms. Jan Perry for her support and involvement in the Little Tokyo Rec Center. As you can see, the streets of Los Angeles is no place for the youth of Los Angeles, especially Little Tokyo. To hang... especially Little Tokyo, to hang out around. This rec center will provide sorely needed programs needed for the youth. I have been very fortunate to work and be involved in writing workshops and other programs from the Casa Hua that can be incorporated to the rec center. Programs such as tutoring for children who are in behind in school. Writing workshop levels, I mean, writing workshops that will increase writing, reading, and vocabulary in our youth, which is a big problem in our LAUSD schools today. This will increase educational levels in our youth and kids. Not only will it benefit our community and be at a safe walking distance for our youth, but it will also benefit our city. By holding programs such as Bring Out the Vote, which I was very fortunate at being involved this year, and other programs that will increase our voting rates in today's elderly, first-time voters, and just people that have hesitated to vote this year or in past years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tony Recaza, to be followed by Kimi Maru.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, my name's Tony Recaza. I'm representing Assemblymember Gilbert Sadio, who represents the downtown Los Angeles area. As Assemblyman Sadio would say, we live in the greatest city, in the greatest state, in the greatest nation in the world, and we want to make this the premier city on this planet. And in doing so, we share, like many of you, the common vision to make this the place to work, play, learn, and recreate. And we're very fortunate to have a City Council member who represents this particular part of our district, who has a compassionate knowledge and the willingness to be fair, to make sure that not only the diversity of our residents is important, but the diversity and quality of the services are provided to the residents. And when we make this premier city, it's because we have those quality services accessible to all the residents. We'd like to thank also Mr. Deaton for working with them and also to let you know that we've had, the Assemblyman has secured $250,000 for this gym. He also secured with the help of the Assembly Speaker, Mr. Hertzberg, and the advocacy of our Council President, Councilman Padilla, to make sure we get the millions of dollars for both of the museums here in downtown LA in the Valley. If there's anything that this member can do, he's in Sacramento right now, but he thanks you for giving me this opportunity to address you and anything we could do to help will be there for you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Kimi Maru, to be followed by Brian Kito.
My name is Kimi Maru and I'm a mother of two children who both play basketball. I took off from work today and brought my children here because I feel strongly that the Little Tokyo Recreation Center should be built on the First Street North block. I want them to learn from this process and be part of building and preserving our community. The First Street North block is a historic part of Little Tokyo. In 1942, our community was unjustly sent to concentration camps. From the 1950s through the 1970s, more of Little Tokyo was lost to the Parker Center, luxury hotels, and expensive tourist shops. It is in this historic context that having the Little Tokyo Recreation Center on the First Street North block has such significance to our community. It will bring together all generations, different nationalities, all sectors of the community to participate in sports, the arts, senior programs, and more. It will be the vehicle to bring hundreds of families consistently to the community to attend performances, events, museums, programs, tournaments, shopping, and eating out. It will revitalize Little Tokyo. We are encouraged by the City Council resolution, which considers the Little Tokyo Recreation Center for the First Street North block. It's a step in the right direction. However, as long as feasibility studies and alternative placements outside the community are equally being considered, the Recreation Center remains only a thought. The council must establish a democratic process that is open to the community for input and where all stakeholders have an equal voice. Let's move forward to revitalize Little Tokyo. The next step would be for a written commitment from City Council that secures the Little Tokyo Recreation Center on the First Street North block. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The time for the five-minute public hearing is up. We will hear from Mr. Kito and for everybody else who submitted a card to speak on this item, we will add your card as part of the file.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and the council. I want to congratulate all the new council members here, especially Jan Perry. My name is Brian Kito and I own the oldest business in Little Tokyo. My grandfather started this business in 1903, will be 100 years old in another year and a half. I've grown up in Little Tokyo, playing on the streets of Little Tokyo. There is even in front of my store, written on the sidewalk, playing in Little Tokyo as a child is one of my memories. I've come here to stress that I do support the gymnasium. I am Vice President of Little Tokyo Public Safety Association and I'm also the Vice President of the Croatia Hot Meal Program, which is our version of the Hot Meals on Wheels program. As growing up in Little Tokyo, I realized when I used to participate in sports, we used to have to go all the way out to Harbor City, go out to Gardena, up to Pasadena, just use gymnasiums. I would hope that we could resolve something in Little Tokyo. The north side of First Street is where my store is located, the historic section of Little Tokyo. That is an ideal place for this project. As a child, I wish I could have had a place to come in Little Tokyo to come. Also too is that the base of Little Tokyo economics has always been based on the support of the Japanese-American community and because of the Japanese-American community moving further and further out of downtown, we've got less and less support. This gymnasium can also serve to bring business to Little Tokyo, also bring the young people to Little Tokyo to expose them to the culture of Little Tokyo. I think this is a very important issue for us. We need to take care of our youth and we need to take care of our elderly. I think this project will do both, being that the gymnasium can also house the hot meal program. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public hearing on this item. The Chair recognizes Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to get a report from Chief Legislative Analyst, Mr. Deaton, on what we've talked about the other day with Ms. Segino and Mr. Watanabe, Children's Museum, Janum, and Moka.
Mr. President, members of the council, we met with all those people and really resolved, I think, that one, we need to move ahead on the children museum on the corner of Judge ISO and Temple. We have bonds that need to be, that we have a limited period of time to expend the money. And the second instance, however, that if this council should direct my office to sit down with the various stakeholders on this issue and identify a site and come back to you within 180 days, maybe sooner if we can resolve that, resolve the issue sooner. To, first off, the financial feasibility, what are some of the locations that would, still remaining, that would be appropriate and what impact various locations would have on the other uses in the park? We believe we can do that in a short period of time. I might point out that this all is keyed on the fact that the existing parking structure would be moved to St. Viviana's and a new project, that that construction project won't be completed for over a year, so that's a reason for the six-month timetable and I think that if we can come back sooner, we will, but otherwise, we'll report back to you on the status in six months.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, do you have any... So recommend. To make additional comments?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Mr. Deaton's recommendations.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate the timetable. I was speaking to advocates and if it's okay with Councilmember Perry as well, if we could at least have an interim report in 90 days, just to make sure we have some movement on that, we could amend that to it.
No problem.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Perry?
I don't have an objection to that, but we did put that timeframe in the staff recommendation based on our discussions with Ms. Segino and Mr. Watanabe and other parties present and I'd like for her to make a statement on the record as to whether or not she is supportive of that time, change in timeframe.
A time change to 60 days would be extremely helpful if it pleases the council. We need to get some form of site control by the fall in order to continue our eligibility for Prop K and State Prop 12 funding. Thank you.
Okay. You okay, Ms. Perry? Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to hear a description of the project in terms of what the rec center entails. I'm not too familiar with all the details, so does someone have a description in terms of what it entails?
Mr. Deaton?
Well, my understanding, at least preliminarily, upwards of 40,000 square feet, but that's one of the issues that we've got to work with the various stakeholders on what sites are available and how we can best establish a gymnasium in that, in the context of the art park. So I think the, I think that's the initial view of Little Tokyo Service Center is 40,000 square feet, but I think that's one of the issues that we're going to bring back to the council and quite frankly, I haven't seen any plans, I've just seen various footprints.
Well, is this gymnasium going to be open to the public and part of the city permit process or, I just wanted a general description of the project. Does someone have a summary sheet of it, maybe a one-pager?
My, all I have is that the need for a gymnasium, that they, that yes, we made it very clear that it would have to be open to, if there were other funds, city funds being used to all, on a first-come, first-served basis, that all the, any of the monies, especially Prop 12 and Prop K monies and obviously any lease that we would arrange for their use of it would implies and would require such open access. Again, like I said, I only have the, kind of a gross footprints, footage, haven't had an opportunity to sit down and talk to them about various designs and I think that's one of the issues that we hope to resolve by sitting down with them and also the other stakeholders in Art Park.
Thank you.
I would just simply ask that whenever we get to that draft stage of design, we look at it, so we know we're...
That's quite appropriate.
Because I just, I don't have any details, so I just feel like I'm signing the blank.
Well, what I think the really intent is, is for that this 60, 90, 180 days that we spend, in fact, filling in the blanks and getting those details so we can all make a rational decision on this.
Thank you. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, it seems as though we're evolving to a level of consensus. I hope that consensus is informed by a sense of identity which has emerged over many years and the extent to which this notion of a recreation center is complementary to that of the children's museum as well as the other venues in that immediate area. But as we think about the issue of what makes Los Angeles what we talk about with regularity, it seems to me when a community seeks to organize itself, to define itself and to show development, show progress, to elevate the quality of life for those who are immediate stakeholders, but beyond the immediacy of the community, that which can project large for the benefit of the whole, we should be quite willing to pay particular attention to that. And that's how I see those arguing for not simply a recreational space and a gym and all those kinds of things, a community center, but something that is much larger than that that has community pride as well as the definition of this particular ethnic group's contribution to our city written all over it. And to the extent that that is the case, I'm pleased to support the councilperson for the Ninth District in her efforts to move consensus agenda for recognizing that those who are advocating here on this particular piece have been doing so for a considerable length of time and you may even recall that this was prior to the children's museum and so forth coming in place. And I don't know that they need to be viewed in competitive terms, but in complimentary terms and in that way, the immediate community and the entire city will once again distinguish themselves respectively. So I'm prepared to be supportive and I'm appreciative of the sense of resolution that is evolving.
Thank you. Mr. Holden.
Yeah, this issue was discussed extensively when Ms. Walters were out ill, Ms. Perry was seeking to be elected to this office and of course, my opinion and those who, some are not here, thought it'd be a good idea is to wait until Ms. Perry is aboard, and she now is aboard, and I'm sure she's going to work with each and every one of you to resolve whatever conflict and there may not be any, any dispute, but she's not new to her and I was aware of that, this issue. Having served on the staff of the Ninth District and had some notion about what was occurring and per her request, it was held and I'm confident that in the timeframe that's already specified, it should be resolved. Now, after saying all of that, you're going to have some people going to say yes and some people say no to whatever's going to be before us, but very seldom if ever do we get unanimous support on any issue, except the holiday. But I would say this to you, that that doesn't mean that we don't try. That doesn't mean that she doesn't, she won't either and I'm sure she will be very supportive to the best of, you know, whatever you guys work out. So I support the continuous. What's the timeframe, Mr. Deaton?
My understanding is we have a status report back in 90 days and 180 we come for sure back. We'll come back with 60 days if we can in fact get it done by then. As soon as we get it resolved, we'll be back.
90 days or sooner is what you're saying.
We will give you a status in 90. We will hopefully be back before then if we can accomplish...
Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry says she told you that was the way she wanted to go.
I appreciate your conveying that to me.
Ms. Perry, to close. She's okay. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll on item number 22. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That item is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there's been a request to take item number 35 out of order. Without objection, we'll take item 35 next.
I believe Mr. Holden called that one special.
Hold my time and I want a staff report on what's being recommended here. I think that they have in hand or have access to about $889 million. This project is going to cost about $2.2 billion and it's going to be spent sometime in, completed sometime in the year 2017 and the streets can be torn up for a period of time. We're going to be indemnified for $29 million with some insurance, got a $500 per day for any violations, which is not very much on the surface, but we want to see, hear a report from the staff, Mr. President.
Sure. I'll hold your time while we call staff forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of council. My name's Paul Janis. I'm Assistant General Manager of the Information Technology Agency. I'm pleased to be before you today to present the recommendation of the Board of Information Technology Commissioners, which is to present, I'm sorry, to award a franchise to Western Integrated Networks, a 16-year franchise to provide cable television, internet service, and telephone throughout the City of Los Angeles. and telephone throughout the city of Los Angeles. There is an ORS report before you, and ORS is here to present on their report as well, and I'm available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Vera Taylor from CEO. The CEO reviewed the recommendations, and we had concerns about the financial viability of WinFirst proposal. As a result, we made some recommendations on IT, how IT can monitor WinFirst. These recommendations have been incorporated into the committee report. If you have any questions, we're available to answer them.
No, you didn't tell me too much. I mean, you're saying here that you're recommending that we present, adopt accompanying ordinance, granting a franchise to WinFirst to provide communication service, cable TV, and so on, instruct the information technology to monitor progress of WinFirst in other cities to see what they've done, which you're not telling me that you have done. You should do that before we give them the franchise, and see how successful they have been, which you have not done. At least, I don't have that information. And then instruct ITA to report to the council every sixty days on the status of the WinFirst project within the city, which means they're going to tear up our streets, and they're going to do things, they run out of money, they could run out of money. You don't have any, I don't have what I think I need to vote for this today. Now, of course, the charity committee, Mr. Padilla, perhaps is more comfortable with this than I. We have a new mayor now, and this was approved by, on the Fourth of June, just at the time he was being sworn in and being elected. So what we'd like, what I personally would like to do is to see how he would, how he feels about this, number one. Number two, this is for, for fifteen years, and I have friends on both sides of this issue, which I support them all, but I'm going to withhold today under any circumstances, which means that this will not become final for one week, for sure. And there may be others who wish to do the same. And that way, I, you can have a chance to talk to me about it, let me know what some of my concerns are, how you respond to them, because you're not, you know, you're not saying too much today. So, and I have no problem with, I won't ask for a week continuous, Mr. President. I would say if you want to proceed, go ahead and proceed, but I will withhold, and I'll acquire questions to, answer the questions I have during the interim. You understand?
Okay.
Okay. You'll visit me then, won't you?
We will arrange meeting with you and your staff.
Thank you, all right.
Councilman, by way of response, I had a short presentation on the financial responsibility of Western Integrated Networks for the council. We hired a financial consultant, Kaiser Sheeran Schlegel, which is a certified public accounting firm in Washington. They analyzed the financials of Western Integrated Networks, and they determined, yes, that they had about eight hundred and eighty-nine million dollars in private equity financing to complete a project that would probably cost, in their estimate, two point two billion dollars. Western Integrated Networks has told us they will spend enough money to get into business here in Los Angeles and use the rest of the, rest of the money that they earned from that operation to complete the build-out. That's a typical scenario in, in, in business startups. I also wanted to indicate that the reason we conducted a financial review of Western Integrated Networks is because, as a traditional matter, municipalities prior to granting utility franchises usually examine the financial responsibility of the franchisee because they're granting a monopoly franchise. In this case, we're granting a competitive franchise, so the usual concern, which is that if the company goes under, residents are without service, does not apply to this situation. If, if Western Integrated Networks ultimately fails in their build-out, there will still be the incumbents there to provide services to our residents. And that's why, even despite the findings of the financial consultant, the Board of Information Technology Commissioners did recommend that the franchise be awarded to Western Integrated Networks. I might also add that the franchise provides for a twenty-nine million dollar performance bond, which will be available for call in the event that there are damages to city facilities or streets or public right-of-way, that sort of thing. There is also responsibility to provide insurance and indemnification to the city with respect to most matters related to the franchise. The board made a determination that although there are certain risks involved in granting a franchise to any provider, there, it has to be realized that in granting a franchise to any utility provider, we're not hiring them to do anything. We're, we're essentially leasing out, as it were, our public right-of-way for them to engage in their own business. They will pay us franchise fees and certain in-kind services and products in compensation for using our public right-of-way. But ultimately, if they fail, we will be in the same position we are today, which is that our residents will not have competition, and will not have access to competitive choices in cable television, internet, and telephone. Because, because the risks in the, in the vision, in the, in the opinion of the board were manageable, they recommended this franchise, and we recommend it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Ms. Kowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that last explanation, and in the spirit of competition, I am ready to support this franchise agreement. But from another perspective, I just want to ask some questions and be sure. Members of the council, today we approved a private property issue on telecommunication facilities and standards for what they need to look like, how we get discretionary approval, et cetera. I shared with Councilmember Weiss earlier, a different kind of telecommunication facility, and that is the kind that goes into a public right-of-way. And just as we adopted an ordinance today on the land use planning, private property side, we've been working on a policy for above-ground facilities in telecommunications for our public right-of-way, where previously we had had no discretion, and that's where you see in our sidewalks today, boxes, in our right-of-way boxes, on landscape, in some instances, again, these boxes are eight feet high on a sidewalk, so, so much so that you can't even open a door and get out of a car, passenger side. So we are working on that policy that is in front of the Board of Public Works as well. And my concern in granting this franchise is that in particular, with the size of boxes that are going to be provided for the cable company, and I understand that the cable company says they want a box or a facility for about every thousand homes, so this is going to be a huge number of these. All I want to do is get understanding that in awarding the franchise fee, or franchise today, that we are getting their commitment to abide by the city policies that have yet to be formed, at least right now, we have a moratorium requiring that any access to public right-of-way throughout the city be first informed to the councilmember of the district, who then can consult with the adjoining land users, residents associations, businesses, et cetera. And I just want the understanding and guarantee that this, the commitment of this party is that they will abide by that, they will look at landscaping in our areas, which might be historic preservation overlay zones, or in our specific plan areas, that they will look at undergrounding. I have seen some of their facilities as what they're proposing sort of standalone. I've also seen their facilities in another city, or comparable facilities in the city of Burbank, where they are very, very much landscaped and create almost like a scenic area around them. So I just want that guarantee that aside from the franchise side, in the quality of life, neighborhood improvement, beautification side, that they will abide by those agreements and the future policy that is now pending before the Board of Public Works.
Councilmember, the franchise expressly requires that the company has to comply with all above-ground facilities citing regulations, and there's no exception to that.
Okay, and they are aware of the change that we are making at the city public works side for other applicable companies?
They're aware of the proceeding at the Board of Public Works.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Concerns I have regarding this, the current process, I understand that we have franchises throughout the city of Los Angeles, and different companies have different sections of the city, it's broken up into sectors, correct, or neighborhoods, or partitions, or however we want to describe it. As I understand, this franchise will be for the entire city of Los Angeles. How does it then give those existing organizations, companies, the ability to compete, if we're talking about a competitive process, where there will be a monopoly citywide with one company, and everyone else is then partitioned off to the existing territories that they have? That's my first question. If you can respond to that, please.
Of the way the franchising scheme works in the administrative code, any company, even though they now hold a franchise for only a portion of the city, could tomorrow apply to serve another portion of the city. So there's nothing stopping them from coming before the council at this, at this time, if they wish to compete on a citywide basis with Western Integrated Networks.
Do you know if any of those existing franchise are planning to do that? Have you been approached?
I've not been approached by any, any of the incumbent providers with respect to that.
And the technology, as I understand, will cause the streets to be cut where they will lay cable, over cable that's currently existing from the existing franchise in that area. What happens when the next franchise comes, and then we start laying more cable over more cable over more cable? Is there a process where they can share or lease the lines, so we don't have to keep tearing up the streets and installing cable over cable?
That's an interesting question, we could, we could talk most of the afternoon about that.
Pardon? Carlos, well, I'll get to that yet. Technology, how, thank you. Councilmember Bernstein.
There's, there's a tension in the industry between sharing facilities amongst competitors for obvious reasons, you don't want to be sharing the same facilities with your competitors. On the other hand, you're also correct that digging up the streets to install your own facilities is prohibitively expensive, and if you can lease that, lease or rent that facility from another provider, they certainly have the incentive to do that. The way the franchise is written currently is they have to put their facilities underground wherever facilities are underground. Where facilities are overhead, they are permitted to put facilities overhead, with the preference of using existing utility poles. In those areas where you do have underground facilities, they obviously have a financial incentive to lease from other facilities in order to avoid those construction costs. In addition, we have a provision in the franchise which allows them to lease fiber optic capacity from the city, using the city's network, if it's available, if it's available, and if we have the ability to provide it to them. That would provide us with the best opportunity, I think, to, to require sharing in the interim. We can't, at this point, require them to share with a competitor, the laws simply don't allow us to force them to do that at this time.
All right.
And then my next question is what Councilmember Bernstein mentioned, satellite technology, the DISH, and I can remember when there was on TV, where you'd have a little box and you'd have one channel, and we've gone through a process-
Mrs. Zine, you're going to want to wrap up because your time has expired.
Thank you, just one more moment.
Okay.
Technology, how does this connect with technology?
But the, with respect to how the services are delivered to the customer, it would be fairly similar to how conventional cable television system works. They will have a head end at a particular location in the city, and will distribute signals from that point to a set-top box in the customer's house. And the difference in this case is that they will be installing fiber optic technology all the way to the home, and will have a network interface box at the home, which actually converts the fiber optic technology into technology that the customer's home appliances, such as telephone, television can use.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues that have asked questions on this item already, thank you for those questions, and thank you for those concerns, I believe ninety-nine percent of those were raised and, to my comfort level, addressed in committee. Colleagues, what we have before us is, we say this every once in a while, a historic opportunity in the city of Los Angeles. This is the day that we've all been waiting for. We've heard from constituents, we've heard from cable subscribers, that at some point they want competition. The last major issue, high-profile issue that the city addressed in the last, I'd say, two years, was the issue of quote-unquote "open access," and whether or not we would provide for competition in the marketplace when it came to internet service providers. This is a different issue. This action today could lead to competition in the marketplace when it comes to cable companies. Regardless of the area that you live in, in the city of Los Angeles, we have several franchise areas, today you have the choice of only one operator to choose from. If we grant this franchise to this company, WinFirst, over the next several years, they will deploy a competitive network, so that someday, sooner rather than later, residents of the city of Los Angeles will have at least two operators from which to choose. And we still leave the door open for additional operators, so that one day we may see three or four competitors. And we know that competition in the marketplace sometimes leads to more competitive prices. We know that competition in the marketplace sometimes leads to sometimes better service. That is the opportunity that we have before us today. And so we've gone through the formal processes of analyzing the company from a technological standpoint, and they've passed muster, from a legal standpoint, and they've passed the criteria, and also from a financial standpoint. Now, there's been a slight variety of opinions when it comes to their finances, but the department feels comfortable in moving forward with the granting of this franchise. And yes, I believe, Mr. Janis, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is one of the largest, if not the largest, bonds we've required of any cable operator in the history of the city of Los Angeles. So we have our insurance policy, we have the safeguards in place, should this company be out of compliance with their franchise agreement, or for financial reasons fail to complete their work. Colleagues, a couple of things I want to point out in this franchise agreement. First of all, we are ensuring compliance with our own universal access policy, which would ensure that this company does not redline or discriminate in how they deploy the technology or supply their service. Again, a big accomplishment today would be, would be to bring competition to the cable marketplace. The company is also, to the, to their credit, aggressively pursuing an open access policy to, again, not only bring forth competition from the operator's standpoint, but as far as subscribers to high-speed internet access are concerned, to internet service providers. Their state-of-the-art technology, their fiber to the home can accommodate that. And finally, a true commitment, a sincere commitment, and I commend WinFirst for agreeing to local hiring and to investing in local apprenticeship and internship programs, to build a system throughout the city of Los Angeles, is a gargantuan task, and they know they can't do it alone. They know they're going to have to hire hundreds of people over the next several years, and they're committed to training the people of Los Angeles, young and adults, who wish to pursue job skills retraining, to create a workforce to meet the relevant jobs of tomorrow. They've made those commitments, and so I believe we've took, taken a comprehensive look at the issue and the item before us, and I support and encourage you, colleagues, to support the granting of this franchise, and I ask for your a-vote.
Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this as well, and I take Councilmember Zine's point and appreciate it. I think the larger competition issue is not going to be within the city of Los Angeles. I'm not worried that Adelphia, a large nationwide network, is going to be put out of business by this. I'm not worried that AT&amp;T broadband is going to be put out of business by this. What we are actually doing potentially today is unlocking nationwide competition, and Los Angeles is really taking, I think, a leadership role which will have national significance, because if we get to, into a bidding war here, it's going to be the sort of thing that can have that sort of ramifications throughout the country. I also see another potential upside to this, colleagues, for those people who are out there trying to seek to be a part of the democratic process. And that is that right now, if you want to go on public access, you need to cobble together, you know, a show here, a show there, and a show there. The PEG requirements, which I know are going to be adhered to, I would also encourage you to make sure that there's, and I believe this is what would come about, a city-wide public access channel for the first time, so that an individual who did want the same citywide audience that we get right now every time that we speak, would also have that opportunity, instead of just having it in the Adelphia system, just in the AT&amp;T system. And I think that's a real step forward for democracy as well. I would again encourage, as I did in meeting, that, that I think Hollywood would be a perfect place for the corporate headquarters, though I'm sure many of you have your ideas with that as well, but I rise in support of this. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, I think I'm supporting this. I just, as, as one of the new members, I had, this is clearly one of those issues that I haven't had enough time to really understand the process with where we got today, but am interested in the timeline, I'm interested in if there is going to be an attempt to definitely not only comply with physical and aesthetic requirements, but is there going to be an attempt to comply with public works projects that we have planned in the city? It would be a real shame if we knew in advance that we were going to tear up a particular street, and six months later, WinFirst was in that same location. So hopefully, and you may have already discussed this, but I would really hope that we have a coordinated plan for this, because this is going to be a lot of interruption of people's lives and streets and quality of life, and again, it would be very annoying to people to find out that their streets have been torn up one, two, and three times when we could have coordinated. And the other thing I was, again, you probably already negotiated everything you can for this franchise agreement, but was wondering if- this franchise agreement, but was wondering if, in fact, we had asked WinFirst to think about things like, you know, helping wiring some of our schools or neighborhood councils is something I think we're still sort of not preparing for in the future and feel like one of the big components of neighborhood councils really working is their ability to be connected and wired, not only to city government but to each other. So these are kind of things. And the rumor is, my district is the last place to get this. Like I said, I haven't seen the timeline, but I'd be really upset if I supported this and by the year of 2017, it fell apart and it never did get to my district and we never had choice. So I was wondering how that timeline was devised and if we have any chance to still have input in that. I think you ought to start from both ends of the city and come inward. We're always last.
If I could respond to that, councilmember.
Briefly.
The first question you asked was with respect to the aesthetic requirements and the permitting requirements. The company has to provide us with a construction plan and a construction schedule within the first three months of the franchise and has to begin construction within one year. When they submit that plan, they will provide us with advance notice of all the areas that they go into construction with, so we have coordinating opportunities so that we don't have to cut the street once. We can certainly take advantage of that. With respect to wiring, things like schools, the franchise already provides that they have to provide a wired connection to not only every city facility in the city, but every public school and every community college in the city. So we feel that we accomplished a great deal with that provision. With respect to the order of rollout, that is a matter that we, it was heavily negotiated with respect to balancing affluent areas with less affluent areas, and we really did our best to make sure that the universal access goals of the city were accomplished and that we feel we have done that, although District 15 is later in the schedule.
All righty. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Holden for the second time.
Council president, colleagues, I think this is great that we have this competition. Plus, I wanted to go along the lines of this notion of leveraging. I know we have above-ground facilities. You see these boxes, especially in District One, where they're tagged or there's figured, and it's rather blighting. And I'd just like to put out there that perhaps we can look at the possibility of using these above-ground boxes, these facilities, for community information boards. Looking at the possibility of a multilingual, multi, look at different mediums by which we could communicate. Homeowner association meetings, Boys and Girl Club events, special kinds of programs that basically people are waiting by the bus stop, there's this box, and it's empty, it's full of graffiti. Why don't we have a nonprofit or local business in conjunction with companies like the ones we're speaking of today to create a community information board and perhaps allow the local schools to adopt them? It's a way by which we enhance not only our environment, you know, ways to communicate, perhaps the history of that street or that neighborhood, again, to reemphasize a sense of place. So I'd like to put that out there. I know there's a lot of discussion about these kinds of notions, but hopefully we get some feedback in that regard and see how opportunistic we can be in leveraging these kinds of facilities and resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, and Mr. Padilla. About five years ago, there was an effort in Sacramento to create competition, and the new members then were the first class of term limits. And they voted for deregulation in interest of creating competition. And the rest is history. This is a noble idea, which I have no problem, but I think we have to look at the consequences of our action. One is that when cable TV was born in 1974, '75, '76, where we know of it today, the legislature, which I was vice chair of the Public Utilities, Transit, and Energy Committee, approved, required AT&amp;T to provide access to the telephone poles for the new providers. They'd have to tear up the streets, they'd have to go out and put in new poles, and that way they became competitive. You said it would be almost prohibitive to rip up the streets to install this system. It's a lot of costly, a lot of cost. There should be some provision that will require the initial, the existing providers to provide access, because they have the capacity to do so, for the company that you're about to approve. And therefore, you offset the requirement of tearing up the streets with used tax, not taxes, but with uses, a fund, the parking revenue fund, to improve our streets. And they are much better than I did have been in the past 20 years. Now you're going to go rip them up again, not a good idea. The box is not a good idea. The existing providers have additional space that we can use, and we can require that. It's cheaper for your company to pay for access to that which exists than to go put in a whole new system. Now, having said that, when you granted the right to be a provider, are you going to turn around and sell that right? If you do so, when you transfer it to a new owner, then what's being transferred? The obligation, the requirements, the mitigation efforts that's included in this franchise? I mean, there's so many things that, at least as a voting member, the council, who did not sit at the committee hearing, would need to know. And for that purpose, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Padilla, that I would rather that you didn't call for a vote, just accept the fact that I withhold. Give me a week, one week to review it, and of course, we can press, be in concurrence.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair recognizes Mr. Padilla to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to reply to some of the concerns that have been raised. Some have been answered, at least in part. As far as the above-ground facilities issue, I believe we do have language within the agreement that says that we'll comply with the city policy. And if the policy were to change, if the city were to adopt a new policy as it pertains to above-ground facilities, they would comply with that new policy as well. I'm glad we sought that clarification on the wiring and service to schools, libraries, and all city facilities. I think that's important for all the members to understand. And on the sale transfer, question or concern? Mr. Holden, as you know, with the incumbent cable operators, whenever there's a sale or transfer of ownership, that transaction does require the approval of the city because that agreement is a contract between the private entity and the city of Los Angeles. And finally, in terms of digging up the streets, we have policies in place in the city of Los Angeles that would coordinate street work, not only for the city, but for private entities as well. Cost recovery, when they're doing trench work, to make sure that if we just paved over that street a year or two ago, that the costs are going to be incurred to maintain and repair those streets. There's negotiations taking place, as we speak, I hope, between the incumbents and WinFirst on construction protocols to address concerns and issues of interruption of service as the new company would deploy their technology physically. And I think just to highlight how we're trying to keep the trench work to a minimum, there's a percentage of the deployment of facilities that's overhead, hanging on the poles that exist in the city of Los Angeles, and a percentage that's underground. I know the percentage that would be underground is not 100%, and maybe you want to highlight that percentage, Mr. Janis, as well. But with that, I think several legitimate concerns and questions have been raised. I'm comfortable, as chair of the committee, that we've done the best to negotiate the interest of the city of Los Angeles and the residents of the city of Los Angeles and stand by the agreement before us.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. The rules of the council suggest then that in the event that a member wishes to withhold, it goes over for one week. Mr. Holden, is that your pleasure? All right. Mr. Padilla is chair of the committee. The request has been made pursuant to our rules. Therefore, we will continue this matter. That is, it will be held over until one week, at which time we will take it up and vote at that time. All right. Thank you very kindly. Mr. Clerk, shall we proceed? Mr. Bernstein wishes to be acknowledged.
Yes, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee will meet 10 minutes after the adjournment of council.
Mr. Clerk.
Next on the agenda item is item number 23, which is a staff report that was called special.
All right. Those items are before us.
My name is Ed Rose. I'm with the Office of the City Administrative Officer, and council has instructed our office, in addition to the Department of Water and Power and the General Services Department, to report back to council regarding the implementation of a restructured billing system for operating departments throughout the city. We have met with the departments over the past several weeks, and basically have identified several issues that are involved with the restructuring or implementation of such a system. Initially, the Department of General Services is in charge of paying all of the electricity and water bills for all user departments throughout the city, and as such, they provide billing information to a variety of departments. Where it gets somewhat complex is that with facilities such as City Hall East, which is a multi-tenant use, the department doesn't have the capability of providing itemized or segregated bills for each user department that's housed within the facility. So providing accurate information by department is somewhat problematic. In addition, the department can and does have the ability to provide that information to single tenant or single tenant uses such as maintenance yards and police stations throughout the city. That's one area where we can capture that information and provide it to the department to enhance their conservation efforts. So basically, you have an unfair, or unlevel playing field in which to implement any kind of conservation efforts or to maximize the effort citywide. You'd have, in the outline areas such as maintenance yards, folks be cutting back and realizing savings throughout, but you have folks down in other multi-tenant buildings that really have no incentive in saving. So therein lies a major problem, a fair and equitable system is lacking. Basically, at this point in time, we would recommend to the council that they instruct our office, along with the Department of General Services and the Department of Water and Power, to continue to refine the billing process, possibly utilizing the automated data systems that are presently with both departments to perhaps adopt a methodology that might be applicable to multi-tenant structures, possibly by square footage or another applicable methodology. In addition, we would recommend that the council direct both departments to survey other similar municipal entities such as City of San Francisco, possibly City of Phoenix, to explore other alternatives that other cities have implemented as far as their own municipal facilities. Also, we would recommend that we report back possibly in 30 days with our findings. And lastly, we have department representatives here from General Services and the Department of Water and Power to answer any questions you may have.
All right. You may recall, this is a Galanta-Padilla motion, and I see no one wishing to be heard on the item. I see now Ms. Galanta wishes to be heard. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move the staff's recommendations and also suggest the city of Chicago is one that you might want to look at. I recently attended a conference on climate change and CO2 reduction, and the city of Chicago is doing some very interesting things, and they being as large as we are or thereabouts, I think it might provide a useful model.
Okay.
That's it. I move the recommendation.
All right. It's been properly moved. Is there a second to Ms. Galanta's motion? Is there a second? Mr. Weiss? All right. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. I'll close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 24. I believe there's an amendment by Ms. Miskowski to 24A.
24A. Ms. Miskowski?
That was just to waive the, to delete the waiver of the fee and require the fee to be paid.
All right. It's before us, as there's no debate on that matter, I assume.
I believe there's a card from a member of the public who wishes to speak.
All right. You're correct. I note the name of Larry Green. Is there such a person in the house?
What an exciting, wonderful, knowledgeable meeting. Boy, am I enjoying this or what? Item number 24. I'm Larry Green, by the way. I'll be very quick.
Thank you.
President Padilla wants me to be quick. I'll be quick. Item D, F, G, and H have to do with waiving fees for block parties. I went to a great block party on Coang and Lilian Way last week, so I'm all for that. That's it. It's a great meeting. I'm loving it. I'm loving this meeting.
Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing on this matter. Mr. Clerk, the item is before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item number 26, called special by councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it's been a long meeting, but I would ask colleagues' attention very quickly just because this would probably be a procedural matter that would go through without many people talking about it. The DART teams are something that are very near and dear to my heart, where they are essentially domestic violence rollout teams that go with police officers to the scene of what is still the number-one call that all police officers get, which is domestic violence incidents. It allows professionals to go with those cars, to allow women, family, whoever is in that sort of a situation, to have shelter, to have long-term job training plans, to have a way out that moment, often when it's just police officers that show up who shouldn't and aren't necessarily always trained to. I know there's been a lot more training and some real strides made there, too, that many times the survivors or victims of domestic violence don't see a way out and just say, "No, thank you very much." And time and time again, our police officers have to come back to those same homes. The state has cut funding for this, and it's something that we're going to have to take up here locally. This is one instance, and I strongly support us doing that. But making sure, right now, we have DART teams in half of the precincts, I believe, and I'd really like to see us find a way to make that in every single precinct in each one of our districts, to make sure that we have those professionals, those trained professionals, to roll out. It is so critical, and it will save us money long-term. If we can cut the number of calls because those same homes, you know, a dozen times you will go to, those same apartments, this is something that we have to find money for if the state is not willing to, while fighting to make sure that the state funding continues at a higher level. So just a heads up on that, and I very strongly support this.
All righty. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Mrs. Zine?
Shortage of police officers in Los Angeles, I think this is critical because we'll find that we can free up our police officers to handle 9/11 or other emergency calls, and we can have the DART individuals take care of those issues. And I know, working with Haven Hills Better Women Shelter, how serious a problem this is, and I completely support this. And I also join my colleague, Councilman Garcetti, with the expansion, if we can, city-wide. Every police division should have this in place because every police division's short of personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, followed by Ms. Miskowski.
Council president, members, it's a little sensitive question I want to ask about this program, but does this include providing support for those victims? Let's say a brave victim that's, let's say, there's a police response, there's a victim there, and they need to go to the doctor or they need to be held and be transported. Like in Rampart, I know that the facility is very small, there's no place for a woman that's been traumatized by that event and basically hurting. How do we take care of those victims? Does this program address that kind of issue?
All right.
Does anyone know?
Ms. Miskowski, you choose to respond to that, or is there staff?
Yes, I would just comment, one, this DART program is in the West LA Police Station, and it is exactly dealing with that. It's a way of intervention. We've done two things. We've created a better, more whole-rounded training for our police officers to be aware of the sensitivity of what a domestic violence call is and how to treat the victims of domestic violence. But even with the best of training, and we have done that city-wide, and in each of the 18 divisions, we have officers who are trained to do this, but in each of those, we need something extra. And this is the something extra, those nonprofit agencies that come in to help intervene after the police officers have hopefully very sensitively dealt with the situation, but to create a bridge, to create, perhaps, taking people to a shelter, to work with them if they are medically traumatized, to work them with other self-help, other groups so that they can talk to other victimized people. So this is a program that does need to be replicated city-wide, and it works hand-in-hand with the police officers, but realizing with the police officers, but realizing in the whole other realm of the criminal justice agency and the nonprofit agency, we need to do much more to deal with not only the victims themselves, but the children in a household like that, and provide support, provide networking, provide a place for the children if both of the parents might be involved in being taken in on a call. Who deals with the kids? Clearly, our police stations aren't the place to bring kids who are seeing something traumatized to one or the other of their parents. So yes, this is that. I think it's a great program. It does need to be replicated. We need to go to Sacramento and other agencies to get more money. This is essentially a grant to help fund it here, but it's something that we really need to replicate throughout the city.
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear if it was also, I understand domestic violence umbrella, and there's a lot of issues there, but does it address the rape victim that's not part of a domestic violence scenario?
You may.
If I can answer that, I don't believe it does.
On the sexual assault?
Yes.
There's another program in its entirety that addresses that called the SART teams, and we moved the motion forward, and we expanded the level of funding for that about a month and a half ago. And, Mr. Reyes, I think it's an excellent question, because it is a related topic. I'll have my staff provide you with the packet of information so that you can be, come up to speed on that, but that's a critically important item.
Thank you very much.
Indeed. Ms. Miskowski, do you wish to be recognized? All right. Mr. Garcetti? May I then suggest that pursuant to Mr. Garcetti's suggestion that we attempt to move this effort citywide, that perhaps the motion is in order, and you, as deemed appropriate, Mr. Garcetti, may wish to bring one in, and several members, I'm sure, will wish to sign it, and we can expand this effort. Saying that no one else wishes to be heard right now, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Item number 28. A member of the public wishes to speak on this item. Council calls forward Mr. Larry Green.
I will be very, very brief, as I've been instructed to. This is item number 28, to appoint Councilmember Ed V. Reyes as a voting member of the Pasadena Metro Blue Line Construction Authority. Well, that's great. I took the dash bus here from Beverly Hills Wilton, 803, got here at 8:30, and the red line, got here in 25 minutes, had a cup of coffee, and was the first one to be here at 5:10 for the drawing. So I'm looking forward to the blue line, and all the lines you want to build, I'm behind them. I love all these trains. Thank you. And buses.
Thank you very much. Item number 28 is before us. Any members wishing to speak on item 28? Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Reyes. More meetings. Next item, please. Actually, we have a request for forthwith on item number 26. We'll send that item forthwith. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 34 is a closed-session item. Did you wish to take public comment at this time?
Let's take public comment. This is a point in time in the meeting where we hear from members of the public on items not appearing on today's agenda. We have three cards submitted up until this point. Council calls forward Mr. Larry Green, to be followed by Al Vivon Hurd.
I will be brief, even in public comment. I shouldn't even be here today. I should be either doing accounting or raising money, but, you know, you learn a lot from going to city council meetings, and these are open to the public, and I really encourage everybody from the public to come. They meet Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 o'clock, and the longer you've been president, the closer they're coming to starting at 10 o'clock. I want to say, and you're doing a great job, Mr. President. You're very young to be president of city council of the second-biggest city in the country, but you are very qualified, so you deserve it. I want to talk very briefly about the editorial in today's LA Daily News. It's called, it's a little play on words, for those of you that are fans of music, it's called "Density's Child." It's a play on the word "destiny's child." And they make the point that the City of LA now has a higher density than the City of New York. You probably all know this already. And I just want to quote from the very end of the article. "When it comes to urban planning, local leaders should make quality of life, not placating the whims of developers or raising sales tax revenue. Their top priority in local government, authority must reside in small communities and neighborhood councils, which deserve the most say in their future. The key for LA leaders is to make, quote, 'dense sprawl,' unquote, work, to use land in a way that's efficient but not destructive, and create sustainable communities. It's a choice between making LA the city of the future or a ghetto of the past." This is today's Daily News editorial. The other thing I want to say, and this is a very unpleasant story, but I must point it out, today's metro section of the LA Times reveals the story of these youngsters from Orange County who attacked these kids the other night and raped them, women, young teenagers, and it's awful. It's a terrible, terrible thing, but my only point is this happened in Orange County, a quote-unquote "good" area, and the problems that exist in Southern California are problems for the whole country. And we in the City of LA have to reach, roll up our sleeves, and all work together and solve these problems. Again, I've really enjoyed this meeting today, and this, any one of the things that you folks don't work hard should check out. I know you've got more meetings after this. You earn your salaries. You know, I did not speak against your salaries, notice that. You earn your salaries. You all work very, very hard. I don't know when you all sleep. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I appreciate your brevity and participation. Al Vivon Hurd to be followed by Nico and Theo Milonopoulos. Nico and Theo, you're up.
We are Nico and Theo Milonopoulos, 14-year-old gun control activists and co-founders of Kids Vice LA. We come before you today with sadness to remind you that the toll, that the toll bullets have taken on the children of Los Angeles these past weeks. Elizabeth Tomas, who is our age, was shot in the eye from a stray bullet as she stood in her house in Boyle Heights. An eight-year-old boy was shot to death by his grandfather, a law-abiding citizen with a legally purchased gun. Those two kids are only a part of the ongoing gun shootings, which affect more than 150 kids in the city each year. Over the past two years, we have begged the LA City Council to update its gun laws to those standards of Chicago and Washington DC, which prohibit the sale of all guns and ammunition. We beg you now, as we have over the last two years, to ban the sale of gun ammunition on behalf of the city's children. You have the power to stop the shootings of LA's kids.
Thank you very much, and that concludes the public comment period for today. Mr. Clerk?
That brings you to item number 34, which is a closed-session item. Did you wish to clear the desk?
Let's clear the desk.
Motions for posting a referral?
Those motions are posted and referred.
Request from excuse from council attendants. Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on July 25th to leave at 11:30. For city business, a motion is required.
Ms. Miskowski moves. Mr. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden. On the payroll? Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Galanta requests to be excused on Wednesday, July 18th, for city business if this meets policy.
She is excused.
And Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on August 7th, 8th, 10th, and 14th, and Friday, July 20th, for personal business. This also meets policy.
Just got elected and going on vacation.
The desk is clear, sir, for item number 34.
Let's go into closed session. Council will adjourn into closed session in conformance with California Code. Sergeants, please clear chambers. We are back in public session. Item 34B, by directive of the council, will be continued.
One day until July 18th.
One day. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
The desk is clear.
Are there any adjourning motions? Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, may I request that we respectfully adjourn in memory of Charles Wesley May. Mr. Way was a celebrated gospel songwriter, pianist, and soloist. He toured the world with such names as Diana Ross, Patti LaBelle, Robert Ghulay. He was the founder of the Charles May Ensemble, and the pianist and assistant choir director to the one and only Joe Westmoreland of the Brooklyners Choir at the First African Methodist Episcopal Church. Mr. May is survived by his mother, Viola May, six siblings, and a host of nieces, nephews, and other relatives and friends.
Any others? Clerk, please call the roll. Members, thank you for your patience and focus. This meeting is adjourned.